Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the November twenty ninth meeting of the Jersey City Planning Board. Sorry for the delay. Uh, if we could come to order and please join me in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
The United States of America. To the Republic. Which stands. One nation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty. Justice. For all. All right, thank you. Could we have a sunshine announcement, please, Cam?
Yes, sir. Okay, so good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, November twenty ninth in the year two thousand and twenty-two. This is a Jersey City Planning Board meeting, scheduled five thirty P M start time. Uh, this planning board meeting is being held virtually as video conference open to the public. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting has been given to the editor of the Jersey Journal, the Jersey City Reporter, and posted with the city clerk on November twenty-second in the year two thousand and twenty-two. This meeting was also posted on the Jersey City Division of City Planning webpage, and all distribution materials made available to the board were published and available to the public.
All right, thanks, Cam. Uh, can we have a roll call, please, Mike?
Um, yeah, all right, so.
Cam, can we have a roll call?
No worries. Uh, Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Here.
Commissioner Cruz.
Here.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Here.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Here.
And Chairman Langston.
Here.
Okay, we have five commissioners present. We have a corner.
All right, thank you. Uh, all right, Mike, could we swear in the staff, please?
I see Tim, Cameron, Francisco, Liz. Do you guys want any testimony you get tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
And time. I wasn't sure you didn't have the hand up. I didn't know.
Very sorry.
All right, uh, Cam, do we have correspondence? I know we have a couple items carried.
Yes, okay, so we have five items that have requested to carry with preservation of notice to the December thirteenth regularly scheduled meeting. So that is item eleven on the agenda, address is five eleven Newark Avenue, case number P twenty-two dash one ten. Uh, that is item twenty-two on the agenda. Um, that is case number P twenty-one dash one four nine, address is three five nine to three sixty-one Johnson Avenue. Uh, item twenty-three, which is address eighty Journal Square. That is case number P twenty-two dash zero one four. Uh, we've got item twenty-five requesting to carry. Uh, they are case number P twenty-two dash zero five three. Address is six ten Communipaw Avenue. And lastly, we have item twenty-six, case number P twenty-two dash zero nine eight. The address is one four six to one forty-eight Caterav, uh, also carrying to December thirteenth. So again, that is item eleven on the agenda, item twenty-two on the agenda, twenty-three, twenty-five, and twenty-six, carrying to December thirteenth.
Okay, thanks, Cam. So if anybody from the public is here that's on tonight to hear one of those applications, uh, you will not receive new notice. This is your notice, and we will hear those cases on December thirteenth. Okay, uh, so let's get right into old business. Uh, let me scroll down here. Okay, uh, let's call item eight is case P two-two dash one nine three is an extension of a minor subdivision. Um, I don't have an address. Uh, it's block seven three zero two, lot forty-three and fifty-five.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman Frank Regan here on behalf of the applicant Newport Associates Development Company.
Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, here this evening seeking an extension of time to file a subdivision deed with the county. Uh, the application was approved by the board back on March fifteenth of this year. Resolution was adopted on, uh, April twenty-sixth of this year, and the municipal land use law requires that the deed be filed within a hundred and ninety days of the resolution. Uh, it was recorded, uh, by our title company with the county on the tenth of November, which was eight days after the, uh, hundred and ninety day period expired on eleven two. Uh, we ran into some issues with our engineers finalizing the meets and bounds descriptions, and then we had to submit those to the city engineer for their review and approval. We just got delayed. But it has been recorded, so essentially we're asking for an eight-day extension. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. They actually recorded it, but you're gonna then record the extending resolution, so it's in the chain of title?
Absolutely, we will do that.
Yeah, I'm surprised the registrar didn't kick it back for that. Chairman, this is a belt and suspender situation. The proper thing to do is to provide a resolution so that subsequently it doesn't become an issue in the future with title insurance and the subdivision itself.
Of course, understood. Okay, uh, does anybody from the board have any questions?
No, sir.
All right, thank you, everybody. All right, so at this time, let's open it up for public comment on this application. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this application, please raise your hand. If you're calling in and you want to comment on this application, please press star nine to raise your hands.
Saying nobody from the public, I move to close.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Public is closed. Um, this is Matt's application. I don't think we have Matt on tonight. Uh, Cam, do you want to fill in?
Correct, yes, thank you. Um, I'll be filling in for Matt. Um, he just asked that all of the original conditions of the original approval remain in effect, and staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two-two dash one nine three is presented to the board here tonight.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval.
Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Hi.
Commissioner Cruz.
Hi.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Hi.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Hi.
And Chairman Langston.
Hi.
Motion carries on in favor.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman, members of the board, have a good evening.
Thank you, Council, you too. All right, let's move on to item ten, is case P two-two dash one two-six is a minor site plan and C variance for three fifty-one Marin Boulevard.
All right.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Benjamin Wine of Prime and Two Bell. Can everybody hear me all right?
We can, Council. Good evening.
Good evening. Good to see everybody. Um, I'll just start by thanking everybody for, uh, for entertaining us and putting us on, uh, early on the agenda. Um, appreciate that. Um, so with that, uh, I'll, I'll be brief, but I'll go through our application. So this is an application. I, I do represent BVNJ LLC, also known as Bond Vet. They are a veterinary clinic, uh, organization. The site in question is located at three fifty-one Marin Boulevard. That's block eleven five oh eight, lot three point oh one, and it is located in the Morgan Grove Marin redevelopment plan. Uh, this property, which I'm sure the board is quite familiar with, it's located at the southwest corner of Marin and First Street, and it consists of a newly constructed thirty-eight-story building. Uh, and we have received zoning permission to operate the veterinary clinic in a portion of the ground floor commercial space. Um, I'll indicate as well that the interior fit out is currently in the permitting process, and, uh, Bond Vet is looking forward to being operational in Jersey City. They, they do have locations elsewhere around the area, and they're looking forward to, uh, to breaking in to Jersey City. Um, just as well, just for reference, they recently, actually, we got an approval with them in Hoboken, your neighbor, so, uh, so yeah, like I said, looking forward. Uh, we're here this evening seeking minor site plan approval along with bulk variance and design waiver exception relief for signage in the veterinary clinic, for the veterinary clinic location. Our team did work to capture what we believe is the essence of the neighborhood and the building aesthetic in designing the signage, but due to the particular site and the building that we have there, we do deviate from a couple of the ordinances or the redevelopment plans requirements, rather. Uh, the original building approval did include generic signage. We took a look at that, and as the users kind of come to fruition, the signage, uh, becomes actualized, which is what we're proposing here. So we have four, uh, deviations for you this evening. The first is the number of wall-mounted signs being greater than permitted. So we are permitted one wall-mounted sign. Uh, I believe it's on each facade. We do have a total of three wall-mounted signs. The window signage, which is twenty percent of the overall window along the facade is permitted, and we have forty point seven seven percent, which again, you'll hear about in detail as to why. We have a blade sign, which is permitted to, uh, project fifteen inches off of the facade, and we're at thirty inches. And then lastly, we are proposing internally illuminated signage on a portion of the signage where same is not expressly permitted. So you will hear from our professionals. We have, uh, we have two that I intend to bring up this evening. Well, we have kind of three. It's, uh, Mary Langen and Pei Yu Lin are our project architects who can testify to the signage. And then I have Carolyn Wurstel, who will testify as our professional planner. And lastly, just to indicate, we had a, a good conversation back and forth with the Powerhouse Arts District Neighborhood Association. Uh, we did go back, uh, and forth through some iterations, uh, one of which was they requested that we remove illumination from the courtyard-facing signage, which we've done. Uh, they actually thanked us and wished us luck this evening. And, um, and unfortunately, they only meet twice per year, so much as they wanted to, uh, meet us, they, they did say that, uh, they're happy to do it by email because they weren't having a meeting. So we received Cam's staff report, and like I'll indicate, as always, if approved, we have no problem complying with stipulation. So uh, with that, if there's any, unless there's any questions of me, Mr. Chair, um, I can jump into, uh, the people that really matter.
Uh, let's let, uh, Santo earn his money and qualify your notice.
Sure.
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, I am in receipt of the affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to the application at three fifty-one Marin Boulevard. I've had the opportunity to review it. This matter was originally scheduled for the November fifteenth meeting, was carried through this evening with preservation of notice. We can go ahead and mark the notice as A one for the record.
All right, thank you, Council. All right, Mr. Wine, go ahead.
Thank you. So, uh, so I do see Mary Langen. Um, I don't know, uh, Mary, you have to unmute yourself. I'm not sure. I don't see Pei Yu Lin. But, uh, Cam, if she is on, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
Oh, she's next to you. Okay, even better. That makes it even easier. All right, perfect. So just, uh, just before you get sworn in, just for the board's benefit, um, Mary is gonna be the, uh, the licensed architect that we intend to have uh, sworn in, and as you've seen before, um, Pei Yu is the project designer who works directly under Mary and, you know, can probably speak quite well to the application. So we can get them both sworn in, and we can go through Mary's qualifications.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I'll swear you both ladies in the same time. If you could raise your right hand. Uh, do you swear that both of you, the testimony you give tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yeah.
And then, uh, one at a time, just give me your names, full names, and spell them, please.
Uh, Mary Langen, and I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey.
And Pei Yu Lin, um, licensed architect in New York, not in Jersey.
And just if you're gonna be speaking, Miss, uh, if you could just get closer to the screen, because you're tough to hear.
I think I'll be doing most of the speaking, but if you need to, we'll, we'll move around.
Thank you.
Okay, and, uh, Ms. Langen, I don't know if we've qualified you in the past, have we?
No.
Okay, so let's just go over your, uh, background, your qualifications, your licensing, and, uh, make sure that license is current tonight.
Okay, yes, so, um, I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey. I obtained licensure in two thousand and nineteen. Um, my license number, do you need that?
No, no, that's.
Okay, and it expires, uh, seven twenty twenty-three.
Okay, thank you.
And Mary, just if you don't mind, just where did, did you go to school and what degrees?
Sure, I went to Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute and graduated in nineteen eighty-nine, and I was first admitted to the New York State Board in nineteen ninety-six. And I'm also an N-Car, uh, certified architect.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified then.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. All right, so Mary, if you can go ahead and share your screen and bring up the plans and walk the board through the signage that we're proposing.
Okay. So, can everyone see our screen?
Uh, we cannot yet. We see you started screen sharing.
Maybe.
Okay.
Yeah, good. Okay, great. Okay, so as we've stated, uh, Bond Vet is posing a facility at three fifty-one Marin Boulevard in the MGM district. It's a walk-in and appointment-based primary and urgent care facility for cats and dogs. There's no boarding in this facility. Um, the proposed lease space is, it's located on Marin Boulevard. It's mid-block between First Street and Bay Street. The lease space is two thousand five hundred and sixty-three square feet. It's on the ground floor of this mixed-use high-rise residential building, and the ground floor is retail use. Bond Vet has frontage on Marin Boulevard and also an interior courtyard. So you can see here the Marin Boulevard, and we have our entrance, primary entrance into the facility here. And then we also front on the courtyard here. So as stated, we're here tonight seeking four variances for our signage and our, our window graphics. Our variances are thus. So we're permitted one externally or halo-lit sign at ten percent of our square foot, square foot frontage of this facade. So that would equate a hundred and thirty-five square feet. We're asking for variance for the second sign, which is this primary and urgent care for pets tagline that we would like to add. We're also requesting a variance for both of these signs to be facelit. So they would be a back band of a solid blue that's not lit, and then the words, the icon in front of Bond Vet, the words Bond Vet, the primary and urgent care for pets, that would be an acrylic that's facelit. That's our second, uh, variance here. We are allowed one externally or halo-lit blade sign projecting from the building fifteen inches. And we're requesting a variance to have the blade sign project two foot six inches from the building face, which I'll show you in a minute why. We're also asking that the blade sign, the Bond Vet icon and Bond Vet letters have a metal facing front with illumination coming out the side of those. So the Bond and the Vet and the white and the red would be metal, and then the light comes out the side. The blue is again like the back band of the, uh, the, the building wall signage. It's not illuminated. The reason that we're asking to project thirty inches versus fifteen inches is because of the proportion of the building. As you can see here, we have a two-story facade. Our sign band is that sort of band long there. Yep, and so we were proposing that our blade sign is at sixteen inches above average grade versus sixteen feet, sorry, above average grade versus eight feet, and then we're proposing it to project further basically because of the scale of the high-rise building. We felt that it's proportional to our facade, and it's also proportional to the pedestrian scape. Our other signage, I just will point out, is on the courtyard side, and that is as of right. It's again the same blue back band, and then the icon and the Bond Vet here will not be lit. We met with the Neighborhood Association, and they asked that we, uh, make that signage non-illuminated in keeping with the kind of residential courtyard. So we've taken that and changed that to be non-illuminated. Our fourth variance that we're seeking is regarding the amount of glazed area upon which we'd like to place a graphic. So the graphic would be a vinyl that would be placed on the inside of the glazing. And it's something we do in all of the Bond Vet facilities, and the reason we do it is because of the nature of the business. And in a lot of these locations where we have glazed frontage, we, uh, have a need to obscure what's going on behind the glass. So we're showing here a datum line of three feet and six feet. Three-foot line is what would be, inside of that is the lobby, the waiting area for pet and pet owners that are coming in. And so we're obscuring sort of the backs of their heads as they're waiting and what's going on in there. The six-foot line we're showing here, that datum line, what's going on behind there is surgery, a surgery room, a dental and, and surgery prep area, and then an employee break room with an employee, uh, uh, restroom facility behind it. So we're using that data line to show a placeholder for the graphics we typically apply, uh, at a Bond Vet facility. They don't have any Bond Vet logo on them. They're very playful. They use this kind of serpentine, um, uh, design to them. And so what we're showing with this data line would equate to forty percent of the, uh, uh, the frontage that we're allowed, we're allowed twenty percent. So what we're showing would be a placeholder for up to forty percent there. We've also added that same graphic to the courtyard side, so to keep the facade cohesive there. So in summary, um, as we've stated, we're requesting the variance for the number of signs on Marin Boulevard, the illumination of those signs, the projection of the blade sign, and the graphics in the window.
Thanks, Mary. So just a couple of follow-up questions, if you don't mind, and thank you for your presentation. So regarding the, uh, signage size on the wall signs or the building-mounted signage, um, I know you indicated there's two on the Marin face, and that we'd be permitted, you know, one sign of a hundred and thirty-five square feet. Can you confirm that the two combined are less than a hundred and thirty-five square feet? I think that was.
The two combined are, uh, twenty-nine and a half square feet.
Okay, so in other words, if it was one long sign, you'd have no issue?
Yeah, but because there's two separate, yes.
Mm-hmm. Okay, due to the break in the building, I, I guess?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and then my other question as well is if you could just go back to, uh, the floor plan, which again is part of the set that was, uh, that was submitted. If you, if you don't mind just showing, um, maybe I just couldn't see it on my screen, but I'll zoom in a little bit on exactly what's behind, um, the, the window decals.
Okay, so that's where the hand is now. That's the main entrance, and then that's where pets and pet owners would come in. They would be either there for, uh, a walk-in or a, a, an appointment. Um, and that's sort of our lobby and waiting area there. Okay? The next, the, to the, to the right of that on plan is our surgery room. So we don't want people seeing what's going on in there. The next space over is a dental and prep surgery prep area. So again, we'd like privacy for both pets, the pet owners, and also the staff. And then the next space we have is a break room. And then you can see, you can, there's the, the restroom there as well. So that's a space for employees to take a break and also use the, the restroom.
Okay, perfect. And then just lastly, just looking at this, uh, image over here, um, based on the floor plan, there's really nothing that you, you, there's no real rooms that you could have rejigged the inside and created kind of non-private spaces on the outside. I mean, basically, everything is either exam or surgery or treatment or something of that nature.
Right.
Okay, all right, um, Mr. Chair, I have nothing further for Ms. Langen at this time.
Okay, thank you, Council. Uh, Ms. Langen, just a couple of quick questions. Um, on that sheet, you show a pump room kind of centrally located in the space. Is that for, uh, services inside this space? Or is that a building utility?
No. I'm gonna ask for you to answer that one.
Sure, that pump is to service all the things that we have in our space, in the hand sink, as well as in the exam rooms and our bathroom as well.
Okay, so that's nothing that, you know, would need access.
No, it's just.
Okay, understood. And, uh, the only other question I have, do we know the hours of operation yet? Is this a twenty-four-hour service?
Um, their operation hours is, um, I, we don't want to misquote that, Adam, maybe.
Yeah, I, I, I thought I had that information. I can find that out, but it is not a twenty-four-hour operation.
We have it, and we had confirmed it for the last, last agenda. Um, it was nine to six.
Okay, I, to be honest, I don't need an exact time. That's not what I'm looking for, but, um, Council, I think you see where I'm going. This is a standard condition. We put on any illuminated signage uh, that these signs will only be illuminated during business hours.
Um, I will confirm with the team that that would be correct. Um, I believe that's correct, but if you just, uh, bear with me, you can continue with the next, uh, questions. Just get a confirmation on that.
Okay, uh, so does anybody else have any questions for Ms. Langen?
Nope.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Langen. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, so my next witness is, uh, is Carolyn Wurstel. So, uh, Mary, you can pull down your screen. That's all right. Um, and Carolyn, if you're there. And, Mr. Chair, I will get you the answer to that question. That's.
Appreciate it. Okay, thank you.
Evening.
Hi, Carolyn. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
It's Carolyn Wurstel, W-O-R-S-T-E-L-L.
Thank you.
Ms. Wurstel, good evening. Uh, your planning license is current tonight?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
Great. So as you just heard, we're here for, um, a couple of deviations for the signage for this proposed, um, uh, facility. Um, the first one is the maximum number of signs. Um, we're requesting a deviation for a second sign on Marin Boulevard. Uh, the, um, MGM redevelopment plan permits a maximum of one wall-mounted sign not to exceed ten percent of the area of the storefront to which it's attached. Um, this project is proposing the two on Marin Boulevard. Um, that includes the primary signage, um, with the, the logo, and then a secondary tagline sign, um, which is separated by the, the building architecture. Um, you know, they, they could have been one sign, uh, but the, the uh, architecture of the building itself, um, leads them to be separated. Um, in addition, there's one sign on Bay Street Plaza facade, uh, which will pre, uh, repeat the primary signage, and that is permitted as well. Um, so cumulative, cumulatively, there are three wall signs, wall-mounted signs for this project, uh, totaling uh, forty-five point eight square feet, um, which is about two point two percent of the, uh, total area of the storefront facade. So uh, we're really well within that maximum ten percent, um, and the additional signage is, um, uh, would be proportional um, to the, the size of the, um, frontage that's being proposed here. And it really adds, you know, additional wayfinding, um, you know, to, uh, increase, uh, the visibility of the, the use itself. Um, and, and really is overall just consistent with the architecture of the building and with the scale of the building itself. We're also asking for a variance or a deviation for the maximum coverage of the window signage. Um, as has just been discussed, um, the application includes a vinyl decal for the windows of the commercial space, um, where the proposed coverage, um, on the Marin Boulevard facades, about forty point seven seven percent, where a maximum of twenty percent is permitted. Um, as was sort of described, not all the areas will be opaque, um, but we are asking for the deviation for a maximum um, to allow for some flexibility to make sure that the areas that are more private can be screened adequately. Um, and so that will just, um, you know, it provides some flexibility so that the overall um, design can be finalized, and we're really screening what needs to be screened to provide privacy, uh, for patrons and, and staff of the facility. Um, the maximum, uh, blade sign projection, um, deviation. Um, we're proposing a single blade sign that's gonna project thirty inches or two feet, six inches from the building facade where the maximum is fifteen inches. Um, the overall sign, um, blade sign max, uh, complies with a maximum area of ten percent for a blade sign. Um, uh, and additionally, it's, um, going to be mounted about sixteen feet above the sidewalk, where eight, eight feet is the minimum, um, uh, required to provide for safe pedestrian passage. Um, we're looking to increase the, um, the, um, projection of this sign, uh, for the building to, um, really make it more proportional, uh, given the overall scale of the building, the scale of the ground floor, which is sort of double height, um, as well as the height of the signage above the sidewalk at that sixteen feet. So overall, we, we believe that the, um, allows the increased projection will allow the signage to be more proportional and look, um, more, um, appropriate in the context in which it's going to be placed. And then finally, we're asking for a deviation for the, uh, sign illumination. The project proposes what are essentially eternally illuminated signs, um, uh, which will have, um, eternally illuminated letters mounted on the powder-coated metal panel. Um, and the, uh, blade sign would have sort of the push-through acrylic lettering, um, uh, which with the internal, uh, LED illumination. Um, the signage, uh, would be on a dimmer and a timer. Um and really, this signage is consistent with um similar signage found throughout the downtown. Um and if I can share my screen, we we do, we did have um some pictures of the um uh of some similar signs in the downtown which I can share.
Yeah, and Carolyn, as you bring those up, uh Mr. Alampi, we should mark this as an exhibit as this was not submitted. So I guess I think we're up to it. Yep, perfect.
Yep, um so as you can see, we we do have two um um images of the uh uh the space uh at night. Um it's, there's a a sign uh similar where you've got sort of the illuminated letters um at the one fifty-nine Morgan Street uh with the canopy. Um Jag One Physical Therapy at uh three twenty-three Marin Boulevard and then Kumon um uh facility uh at three seventeen Marin Boulevard. So there are several um instances of this sort of style of lighting where it's the illuminated letters um uh which are found in Marin Boulevard as as well as elsewhere in downtown. So um it is very consistent with the type of signage that exists and and is uh found in the downtown. Um and it's um as you know, it's it's consistent with the character and really it it doesn't um it's consistent with the the purpose, the prohibition, which was to not allow for the eternally illuminated sign boxes flashing or animated signage which are expressly prohibited. So um we believe that the proposed signage is consistent and in character with the downtown neighborhood. Um overall, we think the benefits of the proposed signage outweigh the detriments um improves um wayfinding, um provides privacy uh with the additional signage as well as the larger uh blade signage and provides privacy to the customers and patients um with the um additional um square footage for the vinyl decals. And it's overall for overall, all of the signage is proportional to the size and scale of the building um and the frontages that are being considered here. Um overall, we believe that advances the purpose in municipal land use law um encourages a consistent use um appropriate um for the neighborhood as the um uh uh you know, a service uh to provide a a facility for veterinary services. Um it's consistent with purpose G, uh providing sufficient space and appropriate location for the commercial use. Um and um is consistent with purpose I, uh promoting a desirable visual environment uh by permitting additional signage to improve wayfinding and providing um signage to uh create privacy for the um customer patients and just signage oh that's overall in um proportion to the scale of the building and the the frontage. Um we don't believe that um this result in a substantial detriment to general welfare or substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of the zone planner zoning ordinance. Um as I've said, the the proposed uh signage improves wayfinding and will present any impediments to pedestrian um traffic. Um in fact, it will it will help um pedestrians on the street as it uh will be in scale for pedestrians to see as they're on the street. Um and allows for uh you know, signage for veterinary use in the downtown Jersey City um consistent with uh uh types of uh commercial uses that the MGM redevelopment plan um would promote in this area. Um so overall, we believe uh that the um project can meet uh the deviations can be granted um that the positive and negative criteria have been met.
All right, perfect, Carolyn, you uh you left no questions for me, so thank you for that.
All right, thanks, uh Mr. Wurstel, um saying here.
Yeah, and Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I I have the answer to your question, so yeah, I mean, it'll it'll be, you know, business hours have not fully been established as of yet. Um but to your point, yes, it will be, you know, they they can be shut when, you know, as needed and during overnight non-business hours.
Okay, great, um yes.
Or non-operational hours or whatever, yeah.
Gotcha. All right, thank you, I appreciate that. Um anybody else have any questions for Ms. Wurstel? Okay, thank you, we appreciate it. All right, counsel, anything else?
Uh nothing further for me, I'll I'll just sum up by just uh just very quickly uh thanking the board again for the time. And uh and hopefully you heard that uh that our testimony can justify the relief we're seeking. It's obviously a unique situation, a unique use that's uh that was just only recently permitted actually by uh by by ordinance in the zone, and with it obviously comes the need for privacy, which is, I think, our biggest need for that window decal signage. And just given the scale of the building, um I think you've heard that the signage that's being proposed uh is just a sensible and better planning alternative. So thank you for the time this evening, and uh if you have any questions, we're around.
Okay, thank you, counsel, I appreciate it. Um all right, so at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this application, please raise your hand. And once again, if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hands. Anybody from public on this application?
Seeing no public, I move to close the public.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second, and public is closed. Uh Cam, do you have anything you want to add?
Yes, um only to further um elaborate on uh what Mr. Wine mentioned earlier about meeting with the community. Um I do have record of correspondence with the uh Neighborhood Association, Catherine Moore, and the um design changes that uh the their community leader uh wanted to see implemented have been incorporated into this application here. Um those were specifically um to not have the illumination facing on um uh or or the illumination would be on Marin um facing the the, you know, the main arterial street. Um they didn't want to have it competing with um the lobby entrance. Um so they've agreed to that, and um beyond that, uh planning staff agrees with the uh professional planner uh Ms. Wurstel's uh testimony regarding the variances. Uh we find that the illumination numbering and uh signage type variances here do not have a significant uh detriment to the zone plan or the public's general welfare and well-being. Um and with that said, planning staff only uh would like to add that uh Mr. Wine agreed to the conditions on the uh November fifteenth planning staff report, which you've already agreed to.
Yep.
Okay, and with that, planning staff recommends approval.
Okay, Cam, don't forget we have the additional uh.
Correct, a fifth condition.
Yes, on the signage uh won't be illuminated during off-hours.
Correct, and with the fifth condition of the signage uh during business hours.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two-two dash one-two-six as presented to the board here tonight.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval.
All right, uh Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
I think this so this is gonna be a great project uh for the community. Uh always welcome uh more veterinarian uh offices, so I uh gladly would would vote aye.
All right, Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Okay, Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
All right, Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
All right, and Chairman Langston.
Uh yeah, I agree with staff's comments. Um I think the deviations are well in line with the use and uh there's no detriment to the zone plan, and I'm gonna vote aye.
All right, motion carries all in favor with conditions.
Okay, thank you, everybody, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening, everyone.
You too, counsel. All right, so with this time, uh I do want to bring up a case that's later on tonight. Uh we have a discussion that we have to get out of the way. Uh Cam, could we bring up Jean Paulino?
Yes, sir, let me find him, Gina.
So I'm gonna call uh I'm gonna jump ahead to item eighteen on the agenda is case P two-one dash zero zero seven for eighty Water Street.
I'm here, thank you.
Counsel, good evening. I'm sorry I uh didn't give you notice, but I I want to clear a couple of things up on your application uh before we move. Um so if you want to put your appearance on record?
Sure, uh my name is Eugene T. Paulino uh from Warfarin of Genova Burns LLC, and I represent the applicant group four forty Developers LLC.
Okay, thank you, counsel. And Santo, do we want to uh qualify notice before we start?
I don't think you want to qualify the notice yet. Uh I think that you wanted to discuss with Mr. Paulino the application and uh where we're at with the application. Obviously, this is a large application, so I think there's some some housekeeping we have to do before we give notice, Jim.
Okay, thank you. So uh counsel, the reason I bring you up, uh I have two concerns with your application tonight. Number one, we do not have engineering comments. And number two, uh my understanding is there is no redevelopment agreement in place yet. Uh do you want to? Expand.
Chairman, let me just add to that. Obviously, Jean, the the first issue about the engineering comments is material to the application in terms of a technical standpoint, the board's ability to review such an application of this scale and magnitude. The second part of it, the redevelopment agreement, uh it's my understanding that the applicant has agreed to seek a redevelopment agreement with the J C R A. I further understand that there was an application made quite some time ago to the J C R A, which was subsequently withdrawn. And I'm unclear if there's an application currently pending. What I'm absolutely clear on, unless you tell me otherwise, there is no redevelopment agreement as we sit here today. The only other thing I'd mention is the application fees were not paid until last month. So obviously, uh there's some other housekeeping items that weren't attended to uh until recently, so with that, Mr. Paulino.
Sure, um I'm happy to do that, um.
You're muted, Mr. Paulino.
That always happens, doesn't it? Um so.
Only when you say good things.
Only when I say good things. Um I hope that would be the case. Uh no, I love that, that's not, that shouldn't be the case. Um with respect to the uh engineering uh comments, I I received an email this afternoon from Liz Oper. Uh I responded to it. I indicated that there are really two parts to the site plan application. The first is a site uh site plan that is preliminary and final for eighty Water Street. And the second is for preliminary only with respect to phases two and three, which are the bulk of the balance of the property. With respect to uh Water Street, eighty Water Street, uh she asked whether or not I would agree to uh the comments that uh engineering uh at some point would provide, and I indicated that I would if they were reasonably, you know, uh uh standard comments like we normally get. With respect to the balance of the property, which is seeking only the preliminary, I thought that perhaps the issue of the engineering issues could be addressed in the context of when we return for a final approval from the board, if that should happen. So that they would both be in a more uh the the engineering issue would be more refined at that point in time, because if we're returning for a final, then obviously I know exactly what's going to be developed there, and I know how it's gonna be developed, and I could, we could probably give you better engineering information. Normally, in preliminary, engineering is very sparse anyway. So that how, that's how I was approaching the Division of Engineering's um lack of a report at this point in time. You know that this is an application that's been pending for some twenty-three months. It's, it was January of twenty twenty-one when it was filed. So the road to get to uh being on a Zoom call with you tonight has been long, hard, and difficult. And I'm not blaming anybody, it's just been long, hard, and difficult. And uh my client has been eagerly awaiting to present his project for months and months, if not years. So uh that's how I view the engineering. If if you see it the same way, we could proceed with uh the subdivision application and the site plan application preliminary and final. And just uh you can vote on the preliminary for the phases two and three and deal with the engineering when we come in for the final. With respect to the redevelopment um agreement, that is a really interesting question, because we have been discussing that for months at a time. Um we had a meeting approximately in June in which uh uh of all parties, counsel included, but not that, not this counsel, not Mr. Alampi. Uh uh Mr. Baker, the Corporation Counsel, was there as well as another Associate Counsel. And we discussed uh what are the requirements of going forward, and at that point in time, we had agreed. Uh it was not a handshake, it was no writing, but we agreed, although there was an email from me con- confirming that thereafter. We agreed that the uh site plan could be listed on the agenda, heard, and the uh redevelopment agreement would be uh would be, it would be subject to the condition of obtaining a redevelopment agreement, not an unusual situation, as you know. So that's where we're going. Um tha- that's what my client is absolutely prepared to do. The reason why there was an original problem with uh agreeing to a redevelopment agreement was that um was that there is a stretch of land that is very important, because it divides the easement for New Jersey Transit to go to the uh, I guess, east and west, jump over Route four forty and into Bayfront. And and my client's property sits on one of the stretches, okay? That would be a a raised uh uh rail, okay? And and my client at that the meeting that I referred to in June and in prior meetings uh repeatedly said, there is not an issue with trans trans uh foreign title or an easement to N J T. In fact, we were at that point in time negotiating with N J T, directly negotiating with N J T, trying to understand what they needed. Uh the 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 site, the redevelopment plan as it 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 indicates or plans for the uh lot for the right-of-way is incorrect. It, there's a, there's a change that they made, and we had to adjust for the change. Notwithstanding that, we did do that, and um uh the issue was whether or not we needed to have a redevelopment agreement to negotiate with N J T or not. And the answer to that is, by my view of the redevelopment plan, that there is no obligation to have a redevelopment agreement. Nothing in the plan, nothing says that a redevelopment agreement is required. However, we had agreed to do that. We hit some kind of a bump, and I'll call it a bump, that's not been resolved. But uh that's where we are. We are with, we're 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 ready to do a redevelopment agreement. We agreed that there would be a condition in the site plan to allow a redevelopment agreement. We in- envisioned the redevelopment agreement to include all of the complicated issues dealing with New Jersey Transit, open space, uh dedication of streets, a bunch of things that can't be handled and shouldn't be handled by this board. It's beyond the jurisdiction of of the planning board, in my view, to be dealing with that, because it really takes an understanding of 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 how all the pieces fit together in a redevelopment plan and a redevelopment agreement, as well as the um uh the construction timetables that are set forth in a redevelopment agreement as to when you need to begin and get the various thresholds of approvals. So for all those reasons, the two issues that you raised are, uh the first is absolutely new. We didn't know till today there'd be no engineering report, and the second is old. We've dealt with this, we talked about it, we've agreed to it, and uh we were here to go forward based on what we are, what our discussions were. That's, that's what I need to tell you.
Okay, thank you, counsel, so.
So Chairman, just before you respond, counsel, I'm not gonna go through all of the characterizations that you've made that I don't agree with. Suffice it to say, I don't agree with your characterizations of several of the pertinent facts. Be that as it may, uh I will accept that a application was attempted to be filed quite some time ago. I will say that uh the meeting you're referencing, having taken place back in June or July, has an application for a redevelopment agreement been filed with the J C R A. That's a yes or no question to me, and I think this board is entitled to a candid answer.
There's, there's no question the board is entitled to an answer, and I'm happy to give it, as I was before. Uh an application was filed with the redevelopment agency some time ago about when the redevelopment uh application with the uh site plan application was filed. It proceeded and stopped. It proceeded and stopped. Why it was stopped, how it was stopped, for what reasons it was stopped? Well, we, I won't know. I can tell you why I was not counsel. I can tell you why I was not counsel at the time, and it was, there isn't, there was submissions for a designation. All the financials were submission, submitted. The application was submitted. Apparently, the redevelopment agency wanted additional information, and it didn't go anywhere, okay? After I became involved, counsel, after I became involved, I reviewed the applicable statute, the applicable ordinance, the applicable plan, and thought that it didn't require a redevelopment agreement. So accordingly, we did not do that. It is only in June that my client agreed to go forward with a redevelopment agreement when it became clear that that was a absolute condition or a substitute condition for other terms that that the city wanted at that point in time. I needn't go into the 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 details of that, but it was this or that, okay? And that was a redevelopment agreement. And I agreed to, we agreed to do it, to doing that. And that was, again, not, I wasn't staying in a room by myself. I was with the the Corporation Council, the City of Jersey City, and 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 Associate Counsel, members of the, of the, uh, Planning Division and, uh, H E D C, uh, as well as, uh, my client was there, the the ownership was present. So there were, there were at least nah, I would say eight or nine people in the room at the time.
Counsel, I'm not questioning that, and counsel, let me be clear for for you, as well as everybody listening. I respect you too much to say anything negative to you. I do not believe that you would ever say something untruthful or not candid. I don't believe that. I would never believe that. That being said, my question was simple. I understand that a different attorney handled the matter prior to you being retained by the applicant. I understand that this meeting took place back in June or July of twenty twenty-two. We're on the cusp of December. And in the four or five months, that it was determined by the applicant that, yes, we will enter into a redevelopment agreement. We have no issue with doing that. We're doing it, et cetera, et cetera. An application has not been filed, or it has been filed and it's pending process at the J C R A. That's the question.
Okay, so the J C R As, as I understand it, I am not J C R A counsel. As J C R A counsel believed that that application, because there was no action on it for some time, or there was a disagreement or some other reason. Uh, they had an application. They had all the financials. Uh, I was prepared, and I advised the agency, and I advised the Division of Planning that we were updating the financials as they wanted us to update them and would submit updated certifications if that is, if that was requested. If there's a question as to whether or not my client is, uh, going to apply for designation, there is no question. My client will, and I can say it here, that my client will apply for a designation for redevelopers status based upon the discussions that we had with the city at the time that we discussed.
Fair enough, counsel, but I think you've answered my question. There's going to be updated financial supply to the J C R A. Is that your understanding of what is necessary for the J C R A to make a determination as to either designation or entering into a redevelopment agreement with your client?
Yeah, I think that that's what, if I, that's what I believe they need, and I, that's what my understanding is in speaking to redeveloper counsel.
And are you submitting that?
Yes.
Haven't submitted it yet, right?
We, we, that, my client has submitted voluminous financial information.
Since you're involved.
No, no, my client has submitted voluminous financial information. I want up to date. I wanted to, you know, January, uh, November of twenty twenty-two. That's all I am trying to do at this point. Is submit, do whatever it takes to bring it up to date, so that the, the board, the commission that that reviews this will have, you know, current information in making its determination.
But counsel, and again, I'm not trying to be cute. I'm trying to be clear. We need to update that information. That information has not been updated. And we don't know when we're going to update that information, or we're going to update it, and by the end of the year, we will have submitted updated financials to the J C R A, and then we're waiting for the J C R A. Yes, that's my question.
Yeah, yes, that's correct. We would still need to appear before the the commissioners of the J C R A. And I assume, I assume, present again, uh, a conceptual plan of the project and, um, and ask for a designation. In this instance, unlike in many instances, we don't have a conceptual plan. We have a real plan. Okay, so, uh, and it it's, it's not, in my experience, been unusual to have site plan precede an R D A. That is, that has happened many times in my career. Um, so, uh, although it seems to me I would prefer, if I were on your shoes and sitting, you know, behind, uh, on the other side of this, I would prefer having the redevelopment agreement before I went for site plan. In fact, there's a provision in the redevelopment agreement that really addresses how you're supposed to do that, what the process is. There have been numerous occasions in which that is not the case, that site plan outruns the redevelopment agreement for various, for a variety of reasons.
So Chairman, I think that answers exactly what your question and point was. I think that the issue of the engineering comments is an issue. It sounded to me, and maybe it was just me, but it sounded to me that Mr. Paulino intends to file updated financials with the J C R A before the end of the calendar year. Counsel, did I say anything wrong?
I would, I would, I would, I know that you're not making my schedule, but that would be about right. That would be about right. And and tha- that is not only, uh, something that I I kept to myself. Redevelopment Council is aware of that as well. By virtue of letters to that I've sent.
So Chairman, in light of not having the engineering comments, and in light of the fact that the financials will be submitted by the end of the year, I agree with Mr. Paulino in the sense that I would like and feel more comfortable with the R D A being in place before the board handles its business. But understanding what Mr. Paulino says, I would feel much more comfortable if I knew that at least those documents were submitted to the J C R A, and Mr. Paulino came back and said, we did everything. We're waiting on the J C R A.
Uh, agreed. I I would be much more comfortable moving forward if at least the application was into the J C R A, i- if it was in front of that.
There, Chairman, this Chairman. There is an application before the J C R A.
Counsel, it's not that it's there. There's a question of its status at the J C R A, and if it was or is stale, no different than when you file with a bank to get the loan, right? Yes, you made the application, but now the bank wants updated financials because it's been too long. So if all you have to do is provide updated financials and not all of the other things, because that's sitting on file, that's fair. I'm not saying that may not be the case. I don't know the status at the J C R A. I'm accepting your representation that, based on your conversations with counsel to the J C R A, the application is still considered open at the J C R A. And the thing that your client has to do and what the J C R A is waiting for are updated financials. Is that fair?
Yeah. Uh, we're, we're going on a tributary of the discussion that I think we need to have, and I apologize for saying that. But the, 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 the issue of the J, of the R D A, of the redevelopment agreement is not an issue that is, uh, pivotal to site plan approval. It is an issue that, uh, was only agreed upon. Actually, we had a meeting in June, and I think the agreement to do an R D A was in September of this year. And the understanding at that meeting was that the site plan would proceed, be placed on the agenda, which we've attempted to have placed on the agenda for as the month, as many months as I told you. And that now we were on the agenda, and we would, would we or would we not agree to a redevelopment agreement as a condition of approval? And we agreed. That would be a condition of approval. That's fine. So that's where we are today. We are today before the, the, the Planning Board to ask for site plan approval, understanding that there will be a condition that that approval is subject to a redevelopment agreement. And 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 to wait any longer, we'd be, we'd be closing in on two years from the date of an application.
But if it's conditioned upon getting an R D A, and we're not on the doorstep of getting the R D A, if I put a condition that you get the R D A done within two months, and you don't get the R D A done in two months, that, that doesn't help you, right?
It does.
It does.
My client is eager to have site plan approval for a major project that is large and ambitious. That's what I was going to say in my opening to you. And I, I think that they're entitled to be heard. They have been entitled to be heard for, for a long time. Without a redevelopment agreement, they didn't. Need a redevelopment agreement.
Respectfully, I disagree.
Okay.
As far as the R D A is concerned, if they were so eager in September, they would have provided all the updated financials for the R D A. So it's been at least sixty days. You're telling me that it's this body that's not moving it along? And sixty days, they haven't submitted updated financials?
Your timing is off. Although we would have agreed, although we would have agreed to a redevelopment agreement as a, a condition of site plan approval, it wasn't on the agenda. It wasn't on the agenda. And that was the quid pro quo here. There's, okay, we'll go forward with an R D A, but please, please put us on an agenda.
First of all, it's not a quid pro quo.
Well, I don't mean.
A prerequisite, and we're moving on the same track.
Yeah, I don't, I don't mean, it, it, that's a charged word, but that, that's not what I meant. I'm sorry?
On this side of the dais, I don't like that word.
I understand. I understand. I, I get it. But what I'm, what I mean, well, I'll use your word. It's a prerequisite, and we did that. And we were then told that it was, you know, that it was placed on the agenda, and we're, here we are in the end of November, and we're still not heard. November twenty-nine.
Counsel, I don't have to tell you, for you to go from we're going to be heard, or being told you're going to be heard at the end of September, to getting on a November agenda. That's pretty good around these parts. And I'm sure when you get back to the office tomorrow, all your other clients are going to call and go, how'd you get those guys on in a month?
I'll send them. I'll, I'll switch them to you. Uh, I, I, I'm, I'm anxious.
So Chairman, me and Gene can do this all night, as you're well aware.
I can watch it all night.
I'm glad to hear that. But the reality is, we need the engineering comments at the very.
Yeah, agreed.
May we do this? May I make a suggestion, uh, Mr. Chairman? We are, uh, we have a, um, the engineering plans, I hope, I, perhaps planning could help me with this one. Um, the engineering comments, or rather, should be able to be provided to us by the next meeting of this, this board. They should be. I would suggest that, uh, if, if you're troubled by this in terms of, of not having the engineering, um, available, and and believe me, I'm troubled by it. You know as well as anyone, Mr. Chairman, that attorneys hate to have the, uh, a, a, a report given to them, you know, moments before they, they're stepping up to appear before the board. That's terrible.
So do my counsel.
Yeah, I know. I know. That's why I say that. So, uh, perhaps in both of the, in that two-week lag, we can, I can connect with the redevelopment agency council. I can, uh, urge them to hear, do what they need to do in terms of processing it, if, if that ha- makes you more comfortable in terms of it, the procedure going along, uh, on the redevelopment side, a- and we can hopefully have an engineering um, report that I can respond to, uh, intelligently in two weeks. And we will, we will be heard at that point in time.
So obviously, I, I, given the scope of the project, I, I'm not comfortable going forward without any engineering comments tonight. Um, I also need time to review those as well, counsel. I, I know it's, you know, for your applicant, but it's also for us. So without you know, proper time to, to review these documents, you know, we have to see when they come in. I'm also not comfortable going forward without at least knowing that or, or at least knowing the status of your application with the redevelopment agency. So, you know, by my calculation, we have a hundred and twenty days. Uh, your application fee was paid on October seventh. I'm not a math major. I never was. But my calculation is February fourth is our final date to act on that one hundred and twenty days. So I would be more comfortable, you know, pushing off until the engineering comments are in. We have time to review the engineering comments. And at least, you know, the ball is rolling at the redevelopment agency. So I, you know, what I love to say, I'll see you in two weeks. I, I think I'd be more comfortable after you submit to the, the redevelopment agency. So I think we're talking more January than we are two weeks from now.
I find that unfortunate, Mr. Chairman. I understand what you're thinking. I, 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 I get it from your side of the ledger. It's, it's that's the that's the in- intelligent thing to be doing here, but I tell you that and I'm til- repeating it. My, I know I'm repeating myself. My client's been waiting a long time to be heard.
Agreed. I, I understand.
Getting it on the agenda, getting it on the agenda and pushing it off one more time feeds uh, feeds a, a kind of v- view that's jaundiced here, uh, for my client. I mean, he has been uh, we've had meeting after meeting after meeting after meeting. We've done everything we possibly could, met with N J T, spoken to N J T, worked out plans, fit, you know, com- 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 completed meets and balances. I have a ton of drawings in my, my file cabinet. He wants to be heard. Is that so hard? He wants to be heard.
It, it's not hard to understand that he wants to be heard, but I don't think it's hard to understand that this board wants to do its due diligence. We want to have all the information in place. We don't want what ifs. We don't want, you know, oh, that's going to be submitted. We want to submit it. I, I don't think that's a lot to ask. And that's, that's going to be the board's position.
You're the board. I mean, I.
You know, at this.
Could you schedule it for a date certain?
That all depends on your filing.
Well, in fairness to counsel, in fairness to counsel, we can schedule it for the next meeting for purposes of preserving the notice and keeping it on the agenda. But the chairman is clear. We want those engineering comments in advance. The next meeting's in two weeks.
I know.
So if we get engineering comments at the end of this week, then, you know, that's a great thing. If we don't get them until the day before the next hearing, that's a problem. Additionally, and please tell me if I'm wrong, but it sounded to me like in your conversations with J C R A counsel, you are updating financials. That's all you're doing to satisfy the J C R A redevelopment agreement requirements to be designated to be designated and hopefully start hammering out the RDA.
That's correct. I believe that that is correct. Uh, my last discussion was relatively recent, I can tell you. So
Okay.
Are you asking, well, I, I'm unclear as to the conditions of plus play, placing this on and being heard on the agenda. Are you asking not only that the engineering comments come back, which is fine, right? You want the, you want to see the engineering comments, but are you also asking that I have a redevelopment agreement signed and in place? Because if you're
I'm asking that, I'm asking for two things. I'm asking that the financials, the updated financials get submitted to the JCR A.
Or actually anything they need to process it.
Anything they need to process it. Now here's the heavy lift. Counsel. I want to see something from the JCR A that says we've got everything we need from your client to process.
That's unfair. That is flatly unfair, counsel. I don't have any control over what the JCR A council does or doesn't do or when they do it.
But can we not find out what is required for processing purposes? You're telling me that you've been told you just have to update the financials. What I've been I, I'm, I'm accepting that representation.
Well, let me be clear as to what the representation is so that we don't go, we don't go in different know that the, 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 uh, the uh, the application has basically been ice boxed or placed in, in suspension because we didn't proceed with it. So at this point, the only thing that was asked of us at the time of suspension was financials. I've advised them that I'm prepared to, and I am, I advise the division of planning the same thing. That I'm contacting the JCR A people to reactivate the process. And I assume that includes, and I assume they're my assumptions now, that what they need are financials and anything else they need. You know, maybe they want to look at the plans and see whether or not they, they're okay. That's fine. I have no problem with giving the JCR A whatever they need to process an application. Maybe they want me to sign new affidavits of, of some kind of ownership or whatever, what, whatever they might need. I'm prepared to do whatever the JCR A requires, even though I don't think they need to, even though I don't think it's required under the plan, I'll do it. We're doing it. My client's doing it. I'm and, and, but I want to be able to say to my client, this is on the agenda, will be heard. It, I don't think we're ever going to be able to, um, and, and I'm not, this is not a, a criticism of the agency. I don't think we'll ever be able to reach a redevelopment agreement within the period of time where, where, uh, this would be heard in months, three months, four months. I don't know. That would not be even up to me. It would be, you know, drafts are sent and reviewed and then sent back and then changed and so forth. So there's iterations going back and forth. I want to be able to say to you, I've submitted the process. I've asked for a hearing before the commission and I, I've done everything I could possibly can. Don't ask me now to get the JCR A council to agree with me because they may not. They may say, well, he hasn't done X, Y, or Z. Uh, you know?
Can you get that? Can you at least get a response from the agency as to what's outstanding or you don't think you can even get that?
Uh, I know the agency's counsel and I'm, I'm sure I can get a response. And if I can't, I'll tell you I can't get a response.
Which is absolutely fair, right? All I'm saying is you're telling me that you're under the impression you have to update financials, which sounds like a very reasonable response. But if the JCR A comes back with a laundry list of things, I get it. I do both sides of this thing, Gene. So I understand that. But I want to see some response from the agency understanding that you may not get a response.
Then on this, you and I agree.
It's a reason I'm at this board.
That's the best thing I heard all night. Um, okay, so we can agree that we want some kind of response from the redevelopment agency. We'd like the application to be updated before we move forward. And obviously the engineering comments are outstanding. Um, I know sometimes we do hear an application without those comments. I think this is a special animal here that we have to deal with. There's a lot of, uh, parts that need to be looked at by the engineering division. And I wouldn't want to impose a, a you know, a harsh condition on the applicant to agree to those conditions until we see that.
I appreciate this.
It's for your protection. It's for our protection and city's protection. That's, that's always been my, my standing here.
Uh, we not need, and you, you're not composing as an, as a, as a condition that we have an executed redevelopment agreement in hand when we come back to you.
I, I think that's a lot to ask. I, I understand the redevelopment agency might not work on the same schedule that we do and you do. But we want to see some movement happening here. Um, I, I think at the very least, you know, you should give the redevelopment agency everything they need. And let's see where the process is. And I think that's you know, all we can ask at this point. I, I don't think a redevelopment agreement is going to happen overnight. And I wouldn't ask that of the applicant and I have too much respect for Eugene to do that. Um, so that's where
Counsel, I would never tell you how to practice. I would never in a million years do. But submit it all.
That's what I hope to do, Santo.
Right? The more you put on them and say to me, look, I gave them everything. You know, they wanted drawings. I gave them drawings. Even if they don't want them, I gave them to them anyway. You guys have them. I gave them that. I gave them financials. I gave them title. I gave them, you know, that you would normally get.
If you give me, if you would give me a date certain that I can, I can work toward, tell the agency that we're working toward an appearance before the planning board on date certain, that moves everybody. That would help me. Get what you've indicated.
Chairman, then I think the fair thing to do in that case is give it a date certain in the January meeting because it's not going to happen by December thirteenth, which is the next planning board meeting, counsel.
Well, you agree with that? Give me a date. I'm, I'm happy with that.
Um, Cam, I'm going to put you on the spot. I didn't put the new planning board schedule in my calendar yet.
January tenth.
January tenth is our first meeting in January, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Do we want to say a date certain January tenth at this point and carry the notice? I wouldn't want to make the applicant notice again.
Sure, I think that's fair.
I thank you.
Okay, and Gene, I expect to have a New Year's, uh, present out of this. I, you know, I want to see some movement happen, so.
We will do that.
All right, we appreciate it. Thank you, counsel. So, uh, Santo, do you want to qualify the notice first? Is that appropriate now or do we wait until that January tenth meeting?
Wait until the January tenth, we are carrying. So for purposes of the record and to all of the attendees, case P two one dash zero zero seven, address eighty Water Street, applicant route four forty developers LLC. It's block two one seven zero one. It is lots one thirteen, fourteen, seventeen, twenty four and twenty five. This matter is being carried to the January tenth, twenty twenty three meeting of this body. There will be no further notice. If you receive notice, you will not receive new notice. This is your notice. And it is scheduled for the date certain of January tenth, twenty twenty three, at which time presumably counsel, we will have engineering comments and your transmittal letter to the JCR A saying here is all of our documents. And the JCR A communication back saying, thank you. We received all the documents. They look great. And we can get into negotiating your RDA, at which time hopefully we can proceed with what we do here at this bar.
I appreciate, uh, Chairman, Santo, members of the board, thank you.
All right. Thank you, counsel. Um, Santo, do you want to, uh, do a motion and a vote on this?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Chair, uh, I would like to make a motion at this time to, uh, carry on HP two one dash zero zero seven to a future date in January, uh, with, uh, preservation notice.
Second, January tenth, twenty twenty three.
To be clear, January tenth, twenty, that, twenty twenty three.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to carry. Uh, I'll, I'll do a roll. Um, Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadon.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, thank you, counsel. We appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Um, Mike, do you want to get one more in or do you want to take a break?
I feel like we could do one pretty quick, right?
Okay, yeah, I think
Famous last words.
I say it all the time and I'm always wrong.
Yeah, next thing you know, it's ten o'clock. Okay, so let's call item, uh, twelve on the agenda is case P two two dash zero nine two. That's a minor site plan for two seventy nine Communipaw Ave. Promoted Stephen Joseph.
Good evening, everyone. Stephen Joseph for the applicants. Uh, I, I don't anticipate this application taking more than two hours. Two seventy nine Communipaw, this is not a notice application. It's a minor site plan. I do have, um, an architect. If you could raise his hand, his name is Yuval. I don't know what he is listed under. Um, we also have an engineer. I don't anticipate calling an engineer though. So this is located in the residential zone of Morse Canal redevelopment plan. It, it's an existing multifamily house in this particular zone. If you have an existing multifamily house, you can, um, add in one additional unit into the basement or garden level. That's exactly what we're proposing here, also with some aesthetic improvements to the property. There's no variances whatsoever. Cameron, any luck?
Yuval, you said?
Yeah.
I, I
Is at the bottom, you
Yeah, I got him.
Okay. So very simple application, no variances, completely complies with all the zoning requirements. Let's get Yuval sworn in. There he is.
I did.
Hi Yuval, you can turn your video on, right?
Yeah, I hope you hear me, but I don't see the picture in the, uh, on the, on my screen.
We definitely hear you.
Hear you, sir, but, uh, yeah, we don't have you on video.
Hold on.
There you go.
There you go. We got you.
Perfect.
Yeah. All right, all these electronics, it's going to work.
No, we're good. We hear NCU. So I'll swear in if you can raise your right hand.
Sure.
You swearing to someone you give tonight's going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And for the record, could you state your name, please?
Sure. My name is Yuval, Y U V A L, Welsh, W E L L I S C H. I'm a licensed architect in New Jersey and my license is, uh, in good condition and valid.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Welsh, and, uh, you are qualified.
Thank you.
Great. If you could, uh, just share your screen and, and quickly walk us through, um, the plans that is a
Let's pray, let's pray together because that's what I'm trying to do.
Okay, okay.
I think you have to, you have to send me so I can share, right?
It should, uh, I'm, I'm Should be able to do it.
Yeah.
There you go.
There.
You got it.
Okay, can the board see it?
We can.
Yes. Doing my best over here.
That's all we can ask, sir.
Yeah, let me just, uh, it's my first time doing it and hopefully I can do it, do it. It's coming. Uh, can the board see the first page?
We can, sir, yes.
Okay, very good. Like I said, oh, now I can it's the first time and it works. It's good. Okay, we're talking about two seventy nine, uh, Communipaw Avenue. And it's an existing building roughly about hundred thirty two years. And it's comprised of three sections. The, the right one, as we look from here, is occupied by a family. The left one is occupied by a family, actually, a young couple who renovated, uh, about two years ago. We're talking about the middle section that, uh, has today, all right, of course, all bare and old, uh, three apartments in the first, second and third, um, stories. What we are trying to do, we're proposing four apartments. The basement is going to be an apartment, first floor, second floor and third. Each one of them will have two bedrooms, a master bedroom and an additional bedroom, one bathroom, one kitchen, living room and an independent, uh, laundry and HVAC for each apartment. Every apartment will have a, um, deck and the one on the, uh, on the first floor has, and the basement, uh, have an access to the, uh, to the backyard. We're not changing the facade of the house, which is very beautiful, uh, brickwork. I'll try to make it a little bit bigger. Sorry. Okay, I, I hope you can see the details. We're not touching any of that. Everything is going to stay the way it is. However, uh, we're going to do the front porch again, the front, uh, deck again. It's all deteriorated and of course new railing. Um, we'll clean the brick as much as we can. Um, but it's all in very good condition. I have to say the windows, of course, are going to be replaced by new ones, same size uh, to match the other windows in the building to the back. This is the back. There are no sides as it's like being hugged between the right side and the left side. Uh, as you can see over here, uh, each apartment will have a deck. And as I said, the one, uh, I'm sorry, I said something wrong before. Only the basement will have an access to the, to the backyard, not the, not the first. Uh, and, um, we will have vinyl siding in the back. Uh, and we're not sure whether it be gray or, or beige, but something in that color to match what's around. Uh, we're not touching the roof. The roof will stay the same. One more note that I would like to add is the third floor is actually the, what you see right now, this slider that you see and the deck is an addition on the existing second floor and first. I want to show you. Okay, this is the first and second floor. I'll try to make it a little bit smaller so you see the whole thing. Okay, each apartment is comprised pretty much of the same, but I will go one by one. As you can see, the first floor plan, you go from the ground, couple stairs into an existing, um, front porch. You open the door, you go into a small vestibule that has three stairs. From there, you open the door to the left into the first apartment or go up to the others. These stairs exist. As you can see, you go in, you're at the kitchen and living room, you proceed through a corridor passing the bathroom into the two bedrooms. The master bedroom. Make it a little bit smaller. Goes, uh, has an access directly into the, uh, to the deck. Uh, if you go to, to your right, you see the second floor. Let me just move it a little bit. It's almost the same. You, you climb up, you go into the, uh, into the apartment. Uh, the kitchen is almost in front of you, the bathroom, the one below, and then we have the two bedrooms, same as before, and the, uh, access to the, uh, to the balcony. The beds, as you can see, the master bedroom, just so that you know where you are, is a king size bed and the one in the bedroom number two is a queen size. Okay, the third floor also very similar. Uh, you go in, there's a, there's a, uh, existing You go in, there's a there's a existing big skylight, as you can see in the in the staircase. You go in, it's the same story, we have kitchen and living room to the front, bathroom in the middle, two bedrooms, master and bedroom number two. And the master has an access to the balcony. The master bedroom and the balcony are completely new and on top of what we have below it on the second floor. The basement nowadays is simply empty and not used. Or all thing is not used for a while, but there was only a mechanical room over there. Let me just try to make it a little bit bigger. Okay, so we go through, I'm sorry, the existing door on the right exists today. This will lead into a small mechanical room that will have the electric, the gas. And the electrical meters are going to be outside, under the porch. The door in the middle leads to the apartment, we have a living room, kitchen, and then you have a bathroom on the right side. Bedroom number two and master bedroom almost at the same place as those above it. You also have stairs going up to the level of the backyard from the master bedroom. That's pretty much the presentation of what we're gonna do, what you can see over here is the existing. On the left is the first floor plan, almost nothing exists, there's a few walls. Second floor, same thing. And I'm going to go here, you can see the third floor on the left side. Of course, the stairs exist and everything else, but the walls are pretty much. Going to be taken out, and what you see on the right side is with a little toilet in the middle of nowhere is the existing basement. And that's pretty much my presentation.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you, board, any questions, I'm open.
Okay, thank you, sir. The all of the heating equipment then is located in the basement, there's nothing on the roof, correct?
No, there'll be nothing on the roof, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that. Each apartment has a mechanical closet. That will be independently serving each and every apartment, and there are no equipments of whatsoever on the roof.
Okay, and that's just heater, is that heat and air conditioning?
Both.
Okay, that's great.
I'm sorry, if you just put it one of them, like for, take for example, the second floor, I'll enlarge it so you can see it. It's over here, you see in the living room, there's like a closet and it says water heater and H V N C. And you can look at the other one on the on the left, right across from the bathroom, so each apartment will have its own energy center.
Okay, that's great. That's my only question, anybody else, anything? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And if you could, let's stop that screen share.
And that that concludes our direct testimony.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Okay, so at this time, let's open it up for public comment, if anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this application, please raise your hands. If you were calling in and you want to comment on this application, please press star nine to raise your hands. Anybody from public?
Do you know one from the public chair, I'd like to motion to close.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded, public is closed. Kim, do you have anything you want to add to this?
Um, no, it's very minor in scope and it does not, you know, trigger any variances. And it meets the objectives of the redevelopment plan and the goals of creating a diverse unit and bedroom type for this part of the city. Planning staff just asked that the attorney agreed to the conditions listed in the staff report. And other than that, planning staff recommends approval.
Yep, the applicant agrees, including the the condition about changing the street tree species.
Super, thank you.
Great. I'd like to make a motion then at this time to approve case P two two dash zero nine two is presented to our board here tonight.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded for approval. Okay, Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
I.
Commissioner Cruz. Commissioner Cruz. All right, I'll come back to him. Commissioner Lipsky.
Hi.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Hi.
Commissioner Cruz. Commissioner Cruz.
You're muted, Commissioner, we need you. You're muted.
Hi.
Thank you, and Chairman Langston.
Hi.
Okay, that's all in favor on the approval with conditions. Great, okay, thank you, counsel, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, it's seven fourteen, everybody, let's give our court reporter a break, we'll be back at seven twenty four.
Mr. Lewis, how you doing?
I'm well, how are you?
I'm good, nice to see you.
Good, good. You too, how was your Thanksgiving, good?
I was just gonna ask you, yeah, it was good, lots of food, you know how it is.
Great. Yes, absolutely, we're the family.
That's right.
All right, could we come to order again, please, everybody? And let's call item thirteen is case P two two dash zero eight four is a minor site plan with C variances for two ninety two Witten Street.
Good evening, Stephen Joseph for the applicants, two ninety two Witten Street. This is a notice application, so I would ask that our notices get entered into evidence.
Thank you, Council Chairman, I am received the affidavit of publication, proof of mail and with respect to two nine two Witten Street. Applicant two nine two Witten Street LLC Block two zero three zero one lot seven. Had the opportunity to review it, all appears to be in order, we can mark it as A ones for the rest.
Okay, thank you, counsel.
Great, thank you, so this is located on Witten Street between Communipaw and Lafayette Street, it's in the residential zone. The Morris Canal redevelopment plan, so the two family zone. What we're proposing is a two family house, it is an undersized lot. So we are requesting minor site plan approval with C variances for side yard setback, rear yard setback and building coverage. We have two experts through this evening, Jeff Lewis is our architect, Sam Bellamy is our planner, we will start by getting Jeff sworn in.
Okay.
Hi Jeff, do you swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And for the record, do you state and spell your name, please?
Yes, Jeffrey Lewis, J E F F, R E Y, L E W I F.
Thank you.
Mr. Lewis, good evening, we've qualified you in the past, your license is current tonight?
Yes, there it is.
Okay, thank you, you're qualified.
All right, great. Bring up my drawings and get started here. Okay, so two ninety two Whiten Avenue is an undersized vacant lot, it's a hundred feet deep but only sixteen point six seven feet wide. And I wanted to start it with, start with the photo in the center of my drawings. And what we're showing is our property in the center. And then the building on the right is built right on the property line, and the building to the left is actually set back a couple feet off of the property line. And I also just wanted to note here that neither one of these buildings have any windows on the side elevation facing us, so we don't have to worry about that. We are looking to the site plan over here on the right, we are building our building right up against the right side property line, so it will be built up right against that existing building. On the left side, for most of the building, we have a three foot setback. However, we do have a cantilever at the front half of the second and third floor. And at that cantilever, we have a six inch side yard setback. Looking to the front of the property, we are proposing a new curb, we're providing one new street tree. We're also providing a permeable paver planting strip at the front of the at the front here. New concrete sidewalk, and then going on to our property, we're going to have. Two new permeable paver walkways to our building with planting areas in between them both. The walkway to the right is going directly to apartment number two, the walkway to the left is going to apartment number one, and then along the side to the backyard. There's also on the side yard right around here, I'll show on the floor plan, access to a trash room in the building for both tenants. And then looking back to the backyard, this backyard is enclosed by a six foot board on board fence. We have a permeable paver patio, a lawn area, and then a line of shrubs along the back property line. We also are providing stormwater retention on this property. It will handle all the water from both the yard and the roof drains, everything routed directly to the system. I do have drawings for that, if anyone wants to see them, I can show them to you, they were done by an engineer, but I can walk anyone through them if you'd like. With that, I'm going to move on to the floor plans and walk through what we're proposing here. So the Whiten Street is at the bottom of our drawings here. So on the first floor plan to the right is the door which would bring directly to the stairs. So on the first floor plan, to the right, is the door which would bring directly to the stairs up to apartment number two. Uh, the door to the left provides entry to apartment number one. Uh, this apartment takes up the entirety of the first floor and then the back half of the second floor of the building. It's a one thousand three hundred and fifty-eight square foot, three-bedroom, two-bath apartment. Walking through, we have a front closet with a washer dryer and water heater. To the right, we have a ducted furnace to provide heat and air conditioning for the unit. After that, we have this open living dining kitchen area with sliding doors out to the side yard. Then in the back of this unit, we have one bedroom, one bathroom, and then a stair that goes up to the second floor. Uh, and then going up to the second floor, the back half of the second floor is part of apartment one. We have the stair coming up, and then two bedrooms and one bathroom. Uh, looking to the front half now, we're gonna talk about apartment two. Apartment number two takes the front half of the second floor, all of the third floor, and then all of the roof. Uh, it's a one thousand six hundred square foot, three-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath apartment. So on the second floor, we have the living dining kitchen area, a powder room, and then stair up to the third floor. Third floor, we have three bedrooms, two bathrooms, a washer dryer, and then the stair that goes up to our roof deck. Then on the roof, we actually have two separate roof decks, one in the rear, one in the back, I mean, one in the front, excuse me. Uh, both of them are set back five feet from either the front, uh, the front or the rear of the building, and we're using those five-foot sections to um, provide a green roof trays. Uh, also along the right side of the rear deck, we're proposing a raised planter bed. Uh, in total, the rear deck is a hundred and thirty-six square feet. The front roof deck is four hundred and seventy-five square feet. And the plantings, the three areas together, total a hundred and sixty-two square feet. Looking at our building elevations, the front elevation is over here. Uh, the building finish is an iron spot gray brick. Uh, starting at the bottom, the doors are both painted black with the, with the vision paint along the side. We have a cast stone band above the, above the first floor. All the windows are black wood frame windows, and then at the top of the building, we have a black aluminum wrap cornice. Uh, the side elevations, uh, the left side and the rear elevation are both finished with just a light gray vinyl siding. Those windows and doors are all the same as the front. And then the right side is built right up against that right, um, right on the property line. Uh, where it's not directly adjacent to the building, it will be finished with a smooth deckle finish that will be painted a light gray color to match the final setting. Um, that's actually it. It's a small building. It's a short presentation. Um, thank you for your time. I'm happy to stick around until after Sam's uh, testimony and if there are any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lewis. I have no questions. Anybody else?
No.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
There you go. Uh, all right, let's get Sam sworn in.
Hey Sam, do you swear any testimony you give tonight's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Sure, it's Samuel Bellamy, last name B E L L A M Y.
Thank you.
Mr. Bellamy, good evening. Always a pleasure. Your license is current tonight?
Good evening, yes, it's current and in good standing.
Okay, thank you. Qualified.
Great, um, so getting right into my testimony tonight. Um, as Mr. Joseph mentioned in his opening, this is a permitted use within the residential district that the two family. Um, within the Morris Canal redevelopment plan, we are an undersized and existing undersized non-conforming lot where it's a narrow lot then required sixteen point six seven feet, where twenty-five feet is your typical lot. Um, and then overall sixteen, uh, one thousand six hundred sixty-seven square feet, where your typical standard lot is twenty-five hundred square feet. Um, really what we're proposing, that the bulk deviations we're seeking are related to the undersized nature of the lot. Um, as Mr. Lewis just walked through, on one side of the building, we are proposing a zero foot. On the south side of the building is zero foot side yard setback. Um, that is conforming. It's actually, I don't, not only permitted but required when you have an attached building, a building right on the lot line, so we are conforming in that respect. On the north side lot line, um, we're, we're proposing a building overhang on the second and third floor in the front. Um, so that, that has a six-inch side yard setback where a minimum of two feet is required. So although we do in the back provide a full three feet. Um, we are requesting that deviation per side yard setback. Um, there aren't any adjacent windows on the, on the sides of the two adjacent buildings. Um, so we won't be blocking any light and air with respect to adjacent windows. Um, and the attached zero-foot lot line, um, structure is really consistent with other buildings on the block that are attached buildings. Um, so it's consistent with that building pattern. Um, the other setbacks that we are requesting is for the, the rear yard setback. Um, we're proposing twenty feet and four inches where a minimum of twenty-four feet and four inches is required. Um, what's, what the requirement is, is for a thirty-five foot combined front and rear yard setback. Um, so we're proposing a ten-foot, eight-inch front yard setback which matches the predominant adjacent building, so that is conforming. Um, but with what we're posing in the rear yard, we are short about, um, four feet there. Um, so as I mentioned, we are providing a greater side yard setback as you get back to the, the rear of the building. Um, the rear setback and the lot depth of the building, um, is consistent with other buildings on the block, so there really isn't a substantial detriment, um, to like the, the scale of, of the, um, of the surrounding buildings. Um, and furthermore, adjacent to the rear of this property is a surface parking lot for the church that's on the corner of Communipaw. Um, so there's really, you know, no, no detriment on light and air to any, any open, open space in the, in the back of the property. Um, moving into the other deviation, that's for building coverage. This really is directly related to the undersized nature of the lot. Um, what we're proposing is, uh, sixty, I'm sorry, uh, sixty-four percent where sixty percent is permitted. Um, the proposed building footprint itself at one thousand thirty-seven square feet on a conforming twenty-five hundred square foot lot is approximately forty-two percent. Um, so really, that, that entails that the, the, the scale of the building is consistent with other buildings in the surrounding area and, and then intended um, building footprint of the residential zone here. Um, in terms of stormwater impacts, we are proposing the conforming law coverage of eighty point one percent where eighty-five percent is permitted. Additionally, we're providing, um, green roofing trays and a stormwater detention system, so there's really no impacts. Um, as far as stormwater, um, management goes. And then again, I think that what we're proposing in terms of setbacks is consistent and will allow for light and air to adjacent properties and to the, you know, in center of, of the block. Uh, moving into negative criteria, I don't see any substantial detriment to the general welfare. Again, this is a permitted use consistent with the residential intent of the, the residential zone. And what we're proposing is in scale with, with the bulk criteria and surrounding buildings. Um, there's likewise no substantial impairment to the tenant purposes of its own plan. I think we are promoting the purpose of the residential district, which is to protect and preserve the residential character of the Lafayette neighborhood. And that's through, uh, through conservation of scales, streets, gapes, setback, design, and impact. So I think we're doing that with what we're proposing. Um, we're also consistent with the goals of the Morris Canal redevelopment plan. We're developing a vacant lot within an impro, with appropriate infill development here. Um, as I said, this is a residential use in a residential zone, so there's no substantial impairment to, to the zone plan. Um, well, we are still, we'll be, um, promoting several purposes of the municipal land use law. Um, guiding the appropriate development, the use of the property um, with the permitted, uh, inappropriate scale to unit residential building. Again, the density is conforming and consistent with the area, so we'll, we'll be promoting the establishment of appropriate population densities consistent with purpose E. And, uh, infilling this, this currently vacant lot with a residential building that's in scale with the area. Um, providing front yard landscaping consistent with the neighboring buildings, um, will promote a desirable visual environment consistent with purpose I. Think wrapping that up overall, that the benefits of this, of the project was substantially outweigh any detriments, uh, meeting the C two criteria. Um, and with that, I think both the positive and negative criteria have been met. Um, that, that concludes my testimony for this one, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bellamy. I have no questions. Anybody else?
No.
All right, that concludes our direct testimony.
Okay, thank you, Council. Uh, so at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this application, please raise your hand. And if you're calling in and you want to comment, please press star nine.
Mr. Chair, I see no public. I move to close the public.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Um, this is, I'm not sure whose application.
This may. Um, okay. Uh, good evening, Board. Um, so, uh, planning staff agrees with the testimony from the professional planner representing the applicant. Um, we do agree that this is a C one, uh, type hardship we have here of a exceptionally narrow, um, lot. Um, and the, um, the variances here are largely due to the geometry of the lot and working around um, some of those, uh, you know, tight, uh, corners they have. Um, beyond that, uh, planning staff, we recommend approval, and, um, we just asked that the applicant agree to the conditions in the planning staff report.
Sure, uh, the applicant is, the applicant agrees to all conditions. Um, I, I think we, did we skip over public comment, though?
No, no, we opened it.
Understood. Okay, uh, yep, so applicant agrees to all conditions.
Okay, thank you, Council, and thanks for watching out for us.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion at this time to approve, uh, case, if I can see the case number here. Um. Do you have the case number, uh, Chairman? It's cut off on my.
It's P two two dash zero eight four.
Like to make a motion to approve case P two two dash zero eight four as presented to the board here tonight.
Thank you. Okay, motion is made and seconded for approval.
Okay, on a motion to approve, Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Yeah, I think the, um, variances requested are de minimis and needed me to the lot size, so I, uh, I vote I.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Like the design, I think the area could use it, and I wholeheartedly vote I.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Yeah, I agree with, uh, Mr. Bellamy, Bellamy's testimony. Uh, I think the deviations are uh, in line with the lot size, and there's no detriment to the zone plan, so I'm gonna vote I.
Motion carries on in favor with conditions.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Council.
Thank you all.
Well, let's move on to item fourteen, in case P two two dash zero six four is a conditional use license for one thirty-eight Griffith Street.
Promoting Zachary Rosenberg.
Good evening, everyone. Zachary Rosenberg, on behalf of the applicant, Euphoria LLC.
Good evening, Council.
Uh, Chairman, this is an application for a conditional use, uh, for a class five cannabis retailer. The property is located at one thirty-eight Griffith Street in the Heights, uh, right off of Central Avenue. The applicant has already received its conditional license from the state, uh, as well as a resolution of support from Jersey City Council and the Cannabis Control Board of Jersey City. Uh, just a quick background on the property, it lies within the Central Avenue Block, uh, twenty-nine oh one redevelopment plan. It contains a two-story building. The proposed, uh, retail dispensary would be on the ground, ground floor of that building only. Uh, it was formerly a retail store on the ground floor. It's currently vacant. And the applicant is only proposing interior alterations and some minor facade work and signage. Uh, my only expert witness tonight is Greg Corn, who is the applicant's architect, who will testify as to the applicant's alteration plans. Um, for a swear him in, Council, uh, can you just confirm receipt of the necessary affidavits and proof of mailing?
Thank you, Council. I am in receipt of your affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to the application of one thirty-eight Griffith Street here in the city. Had the opportunity to review it. Does appear to be in order. Chairman, this was carried from the November fifteenth meeting through today. With that, I can mark this as a for the record.
Thank you. Uh, so do we have Greg Corn?
Let me just hear, we just need him to turn on his video.
Okay, great.
Unmute. Hi Greg, let me just swear you in. If you could raise your right hand as soon as you get ready. You swear any testimony you give tonight's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
My name is Gregory Ian Corn. G R E G O R Y I A N K O R N.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Corn, good evening. Uh, I don't believe we've qualified you previously, have we?
No, you have not. I have, um, my plans have appeared for another project, but my testimony was not required for that one. It was also a cannabis retail.
Okay, so, uh, let's just, uh, hear your professional background, uh, whether your license is current in the state of New Jersey tonight or not.
Yes, sir. Um, my license is current in the state of New Jersey. I've been licensed since two thousand eleven in the state of New Jersey. Been licensed to practice architecture since two thousand five, um, in other states, uh, seven other states. Uh, and, um, yes, that's my background. I, um, have my own architectural practice, been in business for twelve years.
Okay, thank you, sir. You're qualified.
Thank you. Um, I have the, uh, plans pulled up on another monitor. Uh, is it possible to make that one able to present as well? Or, uh, because I, I'm being, uh, video through my connection on my phone.
Um, I'm gonna see if I can have multiple screens shared at once, but, um, yeah, you, you should be able to.
Okay, I, um, well.
You're saying you're on Zoom on your phone right now, not on your computer?
Correct, but then on the computer, I'm logged in under another email. The address is info at G K dash A R C dot com.
Oh, I see, so, um, so I should promote that device as well?
If possible, that would be great. Otherwise, I could present it on my phone. I apologize. This particular computer doesn't have a video.
No, I, I can, I can do that. What, what is the name of the attendee for that device?
Uh, G K A, I believe it's under.
G K A, okay. Yep, I see it. Okay, G K Architects has joined.
Okay, then I just need to present that screen. Is the screen now visible?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your patience. Uh, again, uh, my name is Greg Corn. I'm the architect for this project, representing the owner, uh, Euphoria LLC. Uh, the, uh, property is a small mixed-use property, uh, again, uh, located on Griffith Street. Um, and, uh, basically, uh, the, all the proposed alterations to the property are interior. There are, um, some minor, uh, signage and awning, um, changes, uh, requested as well, obviously. Uh, but no changes to the physical construction of the building on the exterior. Uh, except for in, in the rear part of the building, a trash enclosure which is required by the cannabis license is being provided. Um, that is in the rear yard. So just showing you just generally the, uh, the cover sheet, you can see different photos, uh, as normally required for presentation to, uh, J C zoning. Uh, we showed the different front elevation photos. Uh, there is, of course, the site plan. I'm zooming in on now. Uh, again, small lot, um, existing non-conforming lot, uh, of, uh, approximately, um, uh, twenty by seventy-seven feet. Uh, the, uh, the building, the use, uh, is only going to be on the first floor. The second floor is residential with its own separate dedicated entrance. Uh, the two entrances, they're separated by a typical, um, uh, one-hour rated, uh, occupancy separation while by building code, I, uh, by the. uh, one-hour, uh, rated, uh, occupancy separation while by building code, I, uh, by the, uh, uh, uniform construction code. And so, uh, basically, as you could see, the property is, uh, the, uh, the, uh, neighboring, um, properties, one is a parking lot, uh, servicing, uh, the nearby retail area. Uh, the, on the rear yard as well, parking lot and on the, um, uh, to the, um, uh, to the east, uh, a, uh, similar-sized residential building. Moving on to, uh, the existing floor plan, just to show the area of demolition, it's basically an existing retail store. There are a couple of different levels to it, just owing to the topography of the lot. Um, there is also an existing restroom servicing the retail, uh, establishment. I believe the last use was a barber shop. Uh, the, uh, restroom is existing, uh, non-conforming, uh, uh, small, uh, kind of powder room style restroom. And as you'll see later, we propose to improve that. Uh, but basically, this just shows the existing, um, retail store. Uh, as we move on to the proposed plans, sorry, as we move on to the proposed plans, uh, we did do some lighting plans and other plans that are not really in the scope of, uh, interior lighting that are not in the scope of, uh, planning review, but, uh, as part of the presentation drawings. Uh, the floor plan, however, shows, this is the first floor plan, uh, showing basically the full, uh, configuration of, um, the cannabis store. Uh, you have, uh, stepping up from the, uh, sidewalk, a main entrance, uh, with display kiosks, uh, to secure entrance as per the security protocols of the application, leading into, uh, controlled access, secured entrance, leading into the main retail space with more display and, uh, um, and, uh, point-of-sale area as well as immediately adjoining the space, uh, and a new, a handicap accessible resized restroom. Uh, there's also, as per the requirements, uh, employee lounge, uh, and in the rear port portion of the building, a secure office order fulfillment area and secure T, um, cannabis storage area. Uh, as I mentioned, in the, in the rear yard, uh, there is a trash shed as per the requirements and a doorway to the rear yard. This yard, however, will not be used by any, uh, customers. And it is simply for, uh, access to the trash shed as well as to the vault that leads down to the cellar. Um, moving on to the, uh, these are really the finished plans, uh, interior finished plans. Moving on to the, uh, proposed elevations, as I mentioned earlier, the, really the scope of changes to the facade are, uh, the window signage as well as the, um, fabric awning. And, uh, we, we have specifically identified this as a awning of, of fabric, uh, rather than, uh, metal awning or others that are, uh, not permitted. Uh, and, um, the signage will be a vinyl, uh, composition signage. So basically, the, uh, the total signage area as shown on the cover sheet is under the, uh, maximum, uh, the, uh, maximum allowable, uh, of twenty square feet, I believe it is, on the, uh, zoning analysis. Uh, we're at about eighteen point nine square feet of, um, window signage. So, um, that basically sums up my presentation, really from an architectural standpoint. And as concerns, uh, the architectural, uh, exterior and interior work, fairly simple, straightforward retail project. Um, so with that, uh, I, if you have any questions, I can answer them.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Corn. We appreciate it. Um, I have no questions. Anybody else? Okay, thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And, okay, there you go. Uh, counsel, anything else?
Uh, nothing further, Chairman.
Okay, so, uh, at this time, let's open it up for public comment. Anybody from the public that wants to comment on this application, please raise your hand. If you are calling in and you want to comment on this application, please press star nine to raise your hands.
Chairman Seem, knowing from the public wishing to comment, I move to close.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Public is closed. Uh, Francisco, do you have anything you want to add?
Uh, yes, so, I have just a few things. Um, so this applicant, or this site is located in the Central Ave Block two nine zero one redevelopment plan. It's within Zone Three and Zone One overlay. So it allows for retail sales of goods and services. As mentioned earlier, the applicant already received approvals from the CCB as well as city planning. Um, and there was one more thing. Oh, uh, staff was, is in receipt of all, uh, required submittals, and they were also posted on data portal. Um, with that said, staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you, Francisco.
Here, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two, two dash zero six four, uh, as presented to the board this evening together with staff recommendation.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval.
Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
I will abstain.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Wish them all the best. Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Yeah, I'm, I'm excited for this. I'm happy to hear that all the other approvals are in place and, uh, uh, this is my neighborhood. I'm with outside the two hundred foot, but this is my neighborhood and, uh, I welcome it. So, uh, I'm gonna vote I.
Motion carries for in favor, one abstain.
Okay, thank you, everybody. All right, let's call, um, I have fifteen on the agenda. This case P two, two dash zero seven one is a conditional use license for four forty-seven Central Avenue.
Good evening, Stephen Joseph for the applicant. Um, can we confirm we are in receipt of notices, please?
Thank you, counsel. Counsel, I am in receipt of your affidavit of publication, proof of mailing for four four seven Central Avenue here in the city. I've had the opportunity to view it. All appears to be in order. Chairman, you can mark his name for purposes of the.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, so Ron Elkins is our architect this evening. If we get him promoted. Uh, this is for four seven Central Avenue. It's a class five conditional use, um, cannabis retailer. Properties located in the NC Zone. It's on Central Avenue. Um, ground floor retail location, like many of these applications that the board sees. The applicant was approved by Cannabis Control Board on August eighth. All the conditions of approval were met. Otherwise, we wouldn't be here. We wouldn't be allowed to be here. But, um, Mr. Elkins is going to get sworn in and walk you through some of the specifics about odor and noise mitigation. Um, let's get Ron sworn in.
Hi, Ron. Let's start in. Just writing testimony you give tonight is gonna be the truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
And for the record, could you stink and spell your name, please?
Uh, my name is Ron Elkins, R O N E L K I N S.
Thank you. Mister Elkins, good evening. Uh, I believe we've qualified you in the past, correct?
Yes, uh, yeah, numerous, uh, mainly cannabis projects, but yes.
Yes, and, uh, your license is current tonight?
It still is, yes.
Okay, thank you, sir. You're qualified.
All right, Ron, if you could, uh, share your screen and walk us through the, uh, the plans, please.
I will. All right, so what you should see here is a, the space on, uh, four four seven Central Ave. It is an NC Zone. Um, I believe it is block number fifteen oh seven, Lot twenty-three. It's an existing retail space, uh, two stories, but primarily one story. Let me go back to the plan, sorry. Got a little ahead of myself. So currently, it is an existing retail store. It's very small. It's about four hundred and forty or so square feet on the ground floor. There is a, an open basement, which will be partitioned off for storage, um, which will be secure and, uh, and managed by staff and all the security protocols that are already in place. Um, the exterior of the space is, you can see right now, it's Jupiter Nights Hemp Company. Um, it'll be converted to a cannabis dispensary once the license is actually active. Um, really no changes to the exterior other than the removal of this, um, black vinyl awning and the replacement with, um, just simple lettering and then also opaque film as required to block the the view into the retail area. Um, other than that, the exterior will look pretty much the same. You can see the rendering at the top left and then the photo, just the small photo directly below it, not too much different, um, in terms of the proposal. Let me go into the plan. So, so again, it is a very small space. Um, we do have all the components required. We've got a secure waiting area, you know, here for the entry. Um, we also have a, once people are, their IDs are, are checked and it's confirmed that they're within the right age and, and everything, then they'll be allowed into the retail area, which is basically this, um, hundred and fifty-two square foot zone right here. There's one cashier station back here. And then the only access to the secure areas would be through, you know, past the, um, the cashier. Also with a secure, um, you know, glass partition to basically minimize people from just being able to, to, you know, run right through there. Uh, restroom for staff only. And then the, there's a secure storage area for a small amount of cannabis as well as any cash, uh, deposits that might need to be held there. Um, these walls, you can see graphically, they're shown as, you know, thicker walls. Those would be a, a high-security construction type. Whether it is, um, more than likely not masonry, just due to the weight on the existing structure, but, um, but metal framing, multiple layers of fire retardant drywall, maybe even some wire mesh in between. So if someone wants to break through, they're going to have a hard time getting there. The, I think one of the unique things about this compared to other dispensaries is the fact that there is, um, uh, semi-remote storage where an employee would have to go out into a public space, you know, with a, with a guard or security intact down the existing stairway down to the existing basement. And then into this storage room back here. So all of this would also would be on video monitors. There would be, um, multiple cameras accessing, you know, viewing this space just to make sure that there's no, um, you know, no one breaking into these spaces. The other unique thing about the storage on this space is it does have a sidewalk vault, which this is the stairway up to the sidewalk. Um, but we are also constructing a secure vestibule directly inside that. So if someone happened to get in that vault, there's really almost no way that they could get into the basement. So that, uh, mitigates some of that. Um, we've also prepared a security plan, which, um, and I apologize for all these crazy symbols, but there's lots of different, you know, panic hardware, um, access control on the doors, everything else. The only areas where people are able to come into the space prior to being, um, having their identification checked is just this entry waiting area. After that, then the only space that the public would be ac- able to access is the retail space here. Everything else is employees only. As far as the, um, odor control, we will be proposing a, um, a carbon filtration system on anywhere that there is cannabis being stored or sold. So any exhaust air that does make it out into the public would just be clean air, just like any other, any other exhaust system. And as far as security goes, there are a number of public streetlights on the sidewalk already. Um, there's one just probably ten feet or so, uh, north of this, the edge of this property. And then also there are going to be a multiple cameras on the exterior of the space. Um, one facing the door and then one, well, one facing each side of the door on the front. And, um, the trash, uh, is going to be stored in the basement. And basically, it'll be, let's see. Any waste will be stored in the basement in the secure storage area, and then it will be also pulled out to the sidewalk during the scheduled, um, waste disposal pickup times. So there'll be no, no cannabis, uh, waste, just stored on the sidewalk or in the, the rear of the property. And this building or this retail suite has no access to the rear of the property. There's a, a rear yard currently there, but there's no alley, there's no alley for one, but then there's also no access from the retail space to the, the rear yard. That's for, um, the tenants, the retail, uh, sorry, residential tenants above only. And also, let's see, the other thing I wanted to mention is, since the main secure cannabis storage area is in the basement, that's also where the main deliveries will be held. So deliveries will be scheduled and then also directly through the secure vestibule into the secure storage room. So nothing will come through the, the public area from the sidewalk in the front on the first floor. And going to the exterior, we're keeping the, the tan brick, uh, the same. So really no change to that, keeping the dark brown or dark bronze aluminum storefront the same. Really, the only change is the, the opaque film on the windows with, uh, an updated graphic and then also the updated signage, which will just be, um, non-illuminated lighting. Or I'm sorry, non-illuminated signage. There'll be no lighting on the signage.
Great, um, Ron, is that, does that conclude your testimony?
I believe so. Let me look at my notes. I think I've covered most things. I'm sure there'll be something that, uh, that there'll be a question about, but, uh, but yeah, it's, uh, an existing retail space, staying a retail space, but instead THC, it's converting to cannabis.
Okay, thank you, Mister Elkins. Um, I have no questions. Anybody else? Any questions, Mister Elkins?
No.
Okay, thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And if you.
So that's.
Uh, stop that screen share. There you go. Okay, thank you.
So, so that does conclude our direct testimony. The other thing I did want to mention, because I think it's important, is this location is within two hundred feet of a school. Normally, that would, uh, disqualify. We wouldn't meet a condition of approval, but this location does meet an exemption. There's a specific exemption within the ordinance, which allows, um, existing hemp retailers to get a class five cannabis, what cannabis license if they were in operation prior to February twenty-four, twenty-first, um, twenty twenty-one, we have submitted, uh, a lease agreement and clients ten ninety-nine and an affidavit from existing business owner. Who is going to be the owner of this location as well, that shows the hemp, um, sales were in, the hemp sales happened as of October twenty-first, twenty twenty, um, and continue through today. So we do qualify for that exemption.
Okay, thank you, counsel. And, uh, Francisco, can you confirm that?
That is correct. I am in receipt of both documents.
Okay, and you concur with, uh, counsel's assessment?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so that being said, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this application, please raise your hand. And if you are calling in and you'd like to comment, please press star nine to raise your hands. Anybody from public?
There's seen normal public. I would like to close the public portion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Public is closed. Uh, Francisco, do you want to add anything?
Uh, I don't really have anything to add. I think Mister Joseph covered the last point, um, and just staff recommends approval with conditions outlined in the staff report.
Uh, the applicant agrees.
Great, thank you, counsel.
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two, two dash zero seven one as presented to the board this evening together with staff recommendation and conditions.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval.
Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez. Oh, you're on me.
Doctor Gonzalez.
Doc, we got you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, yes, I will abstain.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
I love the fact that two, uh, proprietors are looking to get off the ground in, uh, the area up in the Heights. Um, glad that council cleared the hurdles with the school, uh, requirement. I know that the applicant, uh, has been operating a CBD hemp operation without incident and has, uh, been exceptionally generous to Pershing Field, uh, children programs as well as Washington Heights, uh, Washington Park, uh, uh, children program. So I wholeheartedly vote in affirmative.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye, good luck, guys. We appreciate it.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Or in favor, one abstain.
Okay, great.
Thank you all. That's it for me tonight. Take care.
Thank you, counsel. Enjoy the rest of your night. All right, well, let's move on to item sixteen. Uh, I'm sorry, before we do that, uh, we do have one item that's requested to carry. It's, and Cam, uh, if you could confirm, uh, item twenty on the agenda is case P two, two dash one five three for one hundred Tours Avenue.
Correct, that's right. Um, the attorney on the application, Mister Harrington, has contacted, uh, Correct, that's right. Um the attorney on the application, Mr. Harrington, has contacted uh the secretary and. We uh received notice that they've requested to carry to the uh the December thirteenth meeting. Again, that is uh. Item twenty uh one hundred tours, so they will be heard at the next meeting.
Okay, so uh for the public's information, anybody that's here tonight to hear that application. Uh you will not receive new notice. Uh this is your notice and we'll be carrying that to our next meeting, which is December thirteenth. Okay, so let's move on to item sixteen. This case P two two dash one four three is a preliminary and final major site plan amendment with C variances for ninety nine Storms Avenue.
Okay, promoting Rich and Chuck, who might be stepping in for Thomas Lee.
Yes, I'm 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 gonna handle this uh for Tom. He's got a conflict.
Okay.
So if for the record, Charles Harrington of Conne Foley, on behalf of the applicant. Um before I start, I asked that the notices be reviewed and marked into evidence.
Thank you, counsel. I'm in receipt of the affidavit, publication, proof of mailing of respect to the application of ninety nine Storms Avenue. Have the opportunity to view it all does appear to be in order. Chairman, you can mark it as a one for the record.
Okay, thank you, counsel.
Okay, thank you. So uh the application before you tonight is uh for an amendment uh to a project that was previously approved by this uh board. Uh what we are proposing to do, it's well, it's a six story building uh with fifty residential units located in the NC zone. It's a. It's an irregular lot that's at the corner of Storms Avenue and Monticello Avenue. Um and uh you'll see during the presentation, it's kind of like a triangular where most of the frontage on is on Monticello Avenue. Um so what my client is proposing is um to uh take take the parking out that we have five parking spaces now. And and convert that into uh retail space. Uh we think it's a better use um. Uh at that portion of of Monticello Avenue. Uh it's also where the Monticello Avenue bends uh to the east, so. We think um vehically, it's a it's probably a safer uh for pedestrians and vehicles at that area. So we will be uh requesting uh relief from the required parking uh for this site. Uh and then there's also, um we picked up on this amendment, we we have um. Uh the bulkhead on on the top of the roof uh was approved as part of the first application, but um we weren't sure if if that was granted as a uh. As a variance at the time, so that's kind of a belts and suspenders request here tonight. Um and uh so with that said, we're we have, I have three witnesses. I have um Richard Garber, my architect. Um Charles Height is is the planner. Uh Joe Steiger is our traffic expert. I'm I'm gonna hold him back and and defer to the board as to whether they have. Uh any questions about the traffic uh after seeing our presentation. Um so with that said, I'm I want to bring uh Richard uh Garber up.
Hi, Richard. Where are you at? You swear any testimony you give tonight is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Richard Garber, G A R B E R.
Thank you.
Mr. Garber, good evening. We've qualified you numerous times. Uh that license is still current tonight?
It sure is.
Mr. Chairman, you're qualified.
Great. Uh okay, so I'm gonna share my screen. Okay, can everyone see?
And Richard, before you start, we want to mark this as A two, correct?
Yes, and I'll get it to uh I'll get it to the planning office tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Uh okay, so um this project, ninety nine storms, as as Mr. Harrington said, is a um six unit fifty uh six story fifty unit building, excuse me. Um that is under construction currently, and we thought it would be very timely to come back to the board and bring up. Um a couple of things. I think most of them are minor, and then we have um parking. Um I should let everyone know as I show a a rendering of what we're proposing here that we we inherited this building. So there was a previous approval on this. Building by others. Um we were then hired by this owner to um to execute another project on a nearby site and and sort of inherited this. We were back before the board for um a small matter pertaining to this building prior to construction some time ago. And now we are um in the ground. Uh I have some photos here of where we are. We're about um four stories. Four to five stories complete of the six story building, and I show these photos. Um these were taken on November ninth, by the way. Because um I I want to actually say two things. One, um nothing that we're speaking to you about has anything to do with. Errors in construction or anything uh like that. Uh this is um a a a decision to remove parking because we actually think it's a better use and and for the record, I I. Have always questioned why there were five parking spots in this building to begin with. Uh as I said, we inherited this project. Um so we are under construction. We are making regular um visits to this site and are in good um communication with the contracting team. I even have a uh. Uh submit a log here that I thought um would make some of the board members chuckle. We're 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 sort of on it. Um this is this one of the spaces that we really want to speak to you about. This is the ground floor. Uh this is a four over two building, so this is a non combustible space. Regardless of whether it's retail or parking, and it's being constructed as a non combustible space. So whether or not we. Um if the board, for some reason, um doesn't allow us to proceed with this, we can still. Um uh you know, adhere to the previous approval and get parking. And so there are no. Changes to the course of construction or anything like that that we are asking for relief or forgiveness for. Um so I just want to make that very clear from the onset here. Um and uh the project is coming along quite well. There are. Few missteps here and there, but uh generally the project is being constructed um well and um and to our liking. Um by the contracting team. So as uh Mr. Harrington said, this is a triangular lot on Monticello with a modest frontage on storms. Uh and there's a curb cut that was in the in the original approval on Monticello of four or five parking spots. Now, five parking spots for fifty units is only uh ten percent. Uh so it's a very, very low parking ratio to begin with. And when you look at the zoning map. Um what strikes me is while this site is in the NC zone, as Mr. Harrington said, it also is right across the street from the start. Of the Jackson Hill redevelopment plan, which is a plan that permits buildings about this size, in some instances, a little bit larger. That carries all the way down Monticello to MLK, basically to the southern, to the southern edge of of JC at at McAdoo. Um and one of the things that is is very important to bring up about that, why that's significant. Is in the redevelopment plan. Um curb cuts are not permitted on uh Monticello or MLK. And the idea there is to um to make those walkable streets, pedestrian friendly streets. With uh retail frontage along what ends up being a very, very important uh and very well traveled. Uh north, south thoroughfare in the city. Uh and so in some ways, while this is an NC site and and we more or less are complying with the NC regulations. Uh I've always kind of thought of it as as really kind of the northern edge of that Jackson Hill plan in terms of the building scale, and it's it's kind of intent. Now, what we are talking about here are the items in red, and so the next several slides you're gonna see is sort of approved and proposed. Uh so you'll see before and after of the floor plans that are affected. And it's primarily that ground floor, and I won't read everything here, but you'll see in the current submission. The main difference is the parking, the five parking stalls are removed. Um our total building area actually drops by about uh uh three hundred square feet just because of the summary configuration at the ground floor. Uh nothing, nothing serious. Um we have a modest drop because of that in the cellar floor area as well. Um and first floor area, but if you see um our amenity area grows. From uh one forty seven square feet to a hundred ninety nine square feet, modest, but fifty square feet more. Our retail area almost doubles from thirty four fifty nine square feet to six thousand one hundred fifty one square feet, and we very much want all that retail. We recognize that this is a. Somewhat uh unstable market for retail, but the owner feels very, very strongly. About that mission of retail and walkability on the Monticello corridor. Uh hence why I brought up the uh the Jackson Hill RDP before. And um finally, the parking is removed here uh and changed to retail space, which gives us the uh the ability to have that six thousand one hundred fifty one square feet. Uh as Mr. Harrington said, there's a roof level. When we inherited the project, uh the existing plans that were approved by this board showed. Two stair towers and an elevator going to the roof, but no roof deck. And the only reason why you would bring two stair towers and an elevator up to the roof is if you had access to. Um uh to the residence, right? I mean, if it was just a service access, one one stair would do it. Um so we are showing a roof deck now, and I think a roof deck makes a lot of sense on this building. Um two thousand two hundred forty six square feet of ones, so it's a nice sized roof deck as well. Uh in terms of the site plan, you see here, um the main difference is that uh the filled in red triangle all the way to your left in the previous submission, that was the curb cut, which we are removing. Uh that means we will have one more parking space as well on Monticello, and so that now turns into a retail entry. And again, it's all non combustible construction, whether it's a parking area or white box retail to be fit out by someone else. Um construction is the same, no change uh in the proposed construction plans, and I showed you that image of um. Of the uh construction from uh uh the other day. Um uh lighting plan, no real change here either. Uh we are able to uh basically pick up. Uh lighting that we had at the driveway entrance and sort of repurpose that location for retail. Uh that you see here, and then these are color coded plans to help the board understand the programmatic changes. So the basement plan, no real change. Uh what you see here is a modest decrease in the retail storage, and then you see on the right side that that's sort of. White trapezoid, um that's a transformer vault, and um the public utility won't allow us to put any kind of programming under that. So that's just a slab on grade, so there's some retail storage that we that we lose uh because of that. Um but you can see that there's um also some residential storage in a multipurpose room that we've picked up here uh as well in the current submission, what we're proposing tonight. Um and then on the first floor plan, this is the plan that really changes significantly, and that you see the gray parking spaces on the left. And um we now have blue, what we're calling retail three, adding about three thousand eighty one square feet. Of retail to bring us to that six thousand one hundred and fifty one square feet. Uh this is all being constructed as planned, and it's a very simple change. Given the non combustible nature of this ground floor to just swap in retail for for parking uh and and things are being built um. To plan, as I as I suggested before, um refuge and bike storage, no change. Um I have the upper floor plans that I'm gonna go through quickly, and that's because we we thought because we were coming back to the board, we would um. Do one more little shot at refining the facade, make it a little bit more fun, make it a little more to our liking. Uh again, this was an inherited project, and um I really feel like we have our ability to kind of. Import our our own design intent on this now that we're back before the board. And so what we're doing is we're changing the rhythm of uh of the cantilevers. On the front of this building, and so you can see the way the red line kind of jogs. There's a modest change to that. And what that means is when we get to the elevation. Um I'm gonna skip over the roof deck for a second, but when we get to the elevation, you can see the before and after, where the previous submission. Had uh basically straight vertical lines alternating between a kind of brick and a cementous fiber panel. We are doing the same. With the with the exception that um instead of the brick being proud, we've pulled the brick back, right? Brick is a heavier material. It makes more sense that it's pulled back. On the facade, and the cantilevered portions now are a little more fun, a little more irregular uh in terms of how they um interact. Uh with the street uh creating both um window boxes as well as some modest um patios. Uh in the in the facade. Uh the materials haven't changed. I mean, we're still using a kind of dark gray brick as well as that lighter cementous fiber panel. We've just kind of reversed it. And um uh we have some uh dark gray architectural grill work um for ventilation and so forth. That remains. You can also see on the ground floor where we had that garage that is now replaced with another retail entry, which we think is quite nice. Um so so that's the main move on the facade. I'm just gonna go backwards and just show the board. The previous submission showed. Um again, two stairs and an elevator going up to a deck to a roof without a deck. Uh we are proposing the roof deck that you see on the right in blue, two thousand two hundred forty six square feet, and um. We are keeping the modular green roof, uh the modular green roof elements along the parapet, as you can see in the front of the building as well. Um just have some proposed uh side elevations and so forth. Again, no no significant change there. The elevation change is really on the Monticello side where we got rid of that curb cut. Uh more sides, and then our building section, you'll see there is um in the previous and current. Um Mr. Harrington asked me right before this if we've changed the bulkhead. I think the bulkhead may have actually come down a little bit. Um as I look at this, but there there is no, I can I can attest that there's definitely no increase in the height of any bulkheads on the roof. Um we we've checked that, so so that's um. Uh that's all good news, I think. Uh another building section. Uh and then you see here the previous and current submission of some of those window boxes, those cantilevered elements. Uh there's a little more movement now. In what we're doing in the in the current submission, what we're proposing before the board, which we think is gonna enhance the building and make it a. A super fun building uh fronting Monticello. Um a little bit more of that. Uh in terms of the current, and then you see here just two axonometric drawings showing the before and after. Uh the before and after rendering. Um we're not really feeling the one on the left. We think the one on the right is much more handsome, and we even have knot wood. Uh aligning the uh cantilevers, you can see on the vertical elements here, just a little pop of color. Uh in the uh in those cantilever portions, and then one more shot of the building, and that concludes my testimony. Again, I think that the parking uh not sure why the parking was was necessary here to begin with, five spaces. I think it's a way better use for retail. I think it uh is also consistent with the goals. Uh of the city, so thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Garber. Um I do have one question. If you could go back to your. Uh roof deck rendering that you just showed.
Sure.
Slides back. Uh now forward, the the color rendering.
Oh. This one?
There you go. That's the one. Um so my question was, and I think uh I just answered it. Uh those green roof elements are not accessible off of the roof deck, correct?
They're not. They're a typical two by two modular green roof element. We use them. We've been before this board with a lot of them. We use the same detail. Um they are just to help uh. Small help, but helped nonetheless with um with recharge. They hold water and allow it to naturally evaporate, alleviating a little bit of the drainage requirements of the building.
Sure, absolutely. Um but they are, they're fenced off from the roof deck, correct?
They are, and actually you can see, this is a good view, Chris, so thank you for that.
Yeah.
Uh the you could see a little fencing here, so we are separated, and then we have a board on board fence that separates the roof deck from the mechanical equipment that's planned. Sort of in the rear corner of the building as well.
Okay, understood. Thank you. Uh that was my only question. Anybody else? Any questions?
Nope.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Garber. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Stop sharing.
I'm gonna bring up uh Mr. Height, so he can address the requested variances, and again, uh Mr. Steiger is is here uh in the bullpen if there are any questions on on traffic.
Hi, Charles. Where are you at?
Uh yes, hi, Mike.
Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
For the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Yes, Charles Height, last name spelled H E Y D T. Thank you.
Mr. Height, good evening. Uh your license is current tonight?
It is current, Chairman.
Okay, thank you, sir. You're qualified.
Thank you. Um I I'll jump right in. Um this is a a an application that has uh certain revisions to it, as Mr. Garber covered. Um the main one, in in my opinion, in terms of planning. Is with respect to parking, but I did just want to reiterate, uh the prior application did have uh relief with respect to the number of stories. Uh setbacks um in the rear yard and building coverage. None of those aspects of this application, these these amendments have changed. Uh so we still are uh for other words, uh working within the previously approved building mass. Um that's important, I think, from a from an impact of of the overall development on on the Jason properties. Um what we are here before you is a transition from um what the parking was, the off street parking was provided. Um to what the current uh envision of of that ground floor. Um to what the current uh envision of of that ground floor. Um the the objective on the applicant's uh side is to really. Uh create a walkable um neighborhood to reinstitute ground floor commercial along Monticello. Uh that's actually the major frontage, while we do have um portion of the frontage on storms. Uh Monticello does constitute a major frontage of of the property. The parking required uh is point two uh spaces or. Point, point two spaces per residential dwelling, um where the overall required is ten spaces, what's being proposed is zero. And with respect to retail, it's one per one thousand square feet, uh so that yields a requirement of seven spaces and what's. Being proposed is zero, so again, it's removing the parking, uh no parking proposed, um but there is parking required under the plan. Um so in terms of uh the benefits, uh in terms of the the thinking here, this would fall under what I would what I would um. Call out as the flexible test where the benefits outweigh the detriments. Uh the benefits being that we are able to increase the amount of retail. Uh again, along a a main corridor, Monticello Avenue. Um and as Mr Garber mentioned, between two uh redevelopment plans to the south, Jackson Hill to the north, McGinnley Square, which do also. Uh call for uh a mixed use um and and a pre predominantly retail ground for. Um the. Whole thinking is that this creates a walkable neighborhood, um and that's part of the goals of of the uh new master plan. Um so we feel that this direction is better suited for the the subject property as well as the overall neighborhood. Um there are other uh items of relief that are being requested. Um one with respect to the uh bulkhead along. Really, the storm frontage, this is the staircase bulkhead that Mr Garber referenced, uh that was part of the prior. Uh application, it's in its current location, it has not changed, it's just that in reviewing the plans, this this that go around. We did identify that that um the requirement is a setback of one foot, one inch. Uh for every uh foot of vertical height for a rooftop appearance. And this staircase bulkhead uh is zero feet from that uh storm's frontage. So that does need relief, but again, it does not, it hasn't changed since the last application, in fact. I think Mr Garber mentioned that it actually may have decreased in in overall height. Um but we are still formally requesting relief for that, for that variance. The. Other items of relief are. Relatively minor, uh they really focus one on signage. Uh so with respect to signage, uh we are adding signage for the commercial tenants, I believe there are three. Commercial tenants, um the number of permitted signs limits um to one for the NC district. Uh in this case, we're proposing three signs, uh so it's the maximum number of signs that's being uh exceeded. Uh again, I believe the uh ground floor is being shown as uh delineated between three different tenants, so that's one sign for each tenant, which is appropriate. Uh and based on the calculations um. Uh prepared by Mr Garber, we do comply with the percentage requirement of the size of the signs. Um the last uh deviation uh or or variance, sorry. Uh is with respect to number of street trees, this is more of a design waiver. Um we uh are proposing uh streetscape improvements. Um we are proposing four street trees, but as the forestry standards requires, it's a total of eight. Um we do have other utilities within the streets, uh within the streetscape that limit us to providing additional street trees. That's the positive criteria, um each of these variants is requested, in my opinion, do meet the benefits. Outweigh the detriment's test um to establish the positive criteria. With respect to the negative criteria, we are in the NC district zone. The. The purpose of the NC district zone, I'll just reiterate. Uh is to recognize the existence and importance of neighborhood business districts and to provide. Round floor commercial and mixed use buildings to remote walkability. Uh I mentioned many of those uh. Uh aspects in the positive criteria, I do still think we're holding true to the NC district purpose. Um being that we are really uh creating a very walkable uh lively ground floor. Uh and streetscape, so I do think we're meeting the intent of the NC district, and there's no substantial impairment, and again, as I mentioned earlier. With respect to the master plan, um there really is a strong stress to uh reduce the automobile dependency and increase. The viability of ground floor commercial um to better enhance communities um as people are able to. Uh go shopping and buy basic commercial, uh basic neighborhood commercial services and goods within a close walking distance. That's with respect to the uh any impairments of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. With respect to the uh any impact to the general welfare, again, it's a product of. Uh the main concern would be parking, in my opinion, um and I know neighbor neighborhoods always. Uh are are concerned about the the limit of viable parking. Um but in this instance, um with this application, we believe the better route to do is to go is to eliminate the parking, eliminate the curb cut. Eliminate any turning movements from the site. Um and allow any future tenants to understand that this is. A live, work, play environment, you do not need a car to live here. Um and that that will be the intent of uh of any future, future tenants. So that's uh my opinion with respect to the negative criteria and any impacts uh to general welfare. Uh and any impacts on the zone planners, zoning ordinance.
All right, thank you, Mr Height, we appreciate it. Um I have no questions, anybody else?
Uh Chris, I do have a question.
Sure.
Um I understand the parking for the residents, but what about the commercial space? Is there parking for them?
So none.
The retail space.
It's seven, seven spaces are required, and there is no parking for all of it.
Is the the intent, I think, is this is, you know, as the zone is defined neighborhood commercial, it's commercial that's gonna. Gonna depend on on the walkability and and you know, people in the neighborhood using it, so you're you typically won't have that that uh parking for commercial.
And counsel, just to follow up, um. I don't think any of those seven spots were ever imagined, those five spots that were proposed originally were for residential use, correct?
That's that's correct.
Okay, so there was no. You know, we already granted a deviation for that retail parking. Okay, bid you, anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh all right, anybody else, any questions for Mr Height? Okay, thank you, Mr Height, we appreciate it.
Pleasure.
Uh counsel, I don't know that we need traffic. A traffic engineer, um we've eliminated parking in the site plan, so I don't know if that would be appropriated this time. Uh does anybody from the board wanna hear traffic testimony?
I don't think so.
Yeah. Counsel, are you okay with that?
I'm okay with that, then uh that that completes our presentation.
Okay, thank you, so at this time, let's open it up for public comment, I see a number of hands raised already. Uh if we could, uh if you'd like to comment on this application, please raise your hand. And if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand. Promoted Boris Cayman.
Boris, if you're there, you can unmute.
Hello?
Hi Boris, I can hear you, are are you able to turn your video on?
Uh uh I I'm gonna try, it's the first time I'm here, I'm gonna, where is David?
Should be right next, there you go, all right, perfect, I see you and I hear you, so I just might swear in, if you could raise your right hand. Swear any testimony you give tonight's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please, and give us your home address?
Okay, uh my name is Boris Cayman. Uh I have a property at two five eight Fairmount Avenue.
Okay, Mr Cayman, uh we have three minutes for you, sir.
Okay, so uh in terms of parking, I'm not sure that the. You know, this people ever tried to park around the area. There is hardly any parking since they start building, and there is building right. Uh everywhere, and there is no parking, number one. Number two, I I have an issue that they said there is that they needed to car. Uh to cut the curb. A preexisting building that they demolished. Had a had a garage and had the access through the street through uh month on Monticello Avenue that they would. Pull in and it didn't affect any pedestrian traffic whatsoever. Okay? Number, number three issue is they building, uh they wanted to put uh um uh. Roof deck for everybody to enjoy. My building. Goes right into, basically, it's gonna be somebody who's gonna be there all all the time, all kinds of hours. And all kind of day, they they can be making noise, you know, they're gonna be never a peaceful situation there. And the the people that build it also just wanted to mention, since they got variance to build on property line, they did. Damage, huge damage to my building, over sixty thousand dollars worth of damage to my building, which they never ever corrected. They never had anything, they didn't want anything to do, they constantly trespass onto my property without asking, remove my fans. Went on my property, I asked him not to, I called the police, I did everything, I went in front of the council, nothing helps, nothing. These people are not good neighbors. You know, that's it, you know, I don't know, I'm totally against all this pre- propositions.
Okay, thank you, Mr Cayman, uh just hang on one second if we could, um counsel, can we uh? Can we address any damage possibly uh with with your client?
Yeah.
And it's made whole here?
Sure, yeah, my client has always been willing to uh, you know, speak with Mr Cayman and any any damage that that he incurred or alleged to incur. Um he has reached out to them, it's my understanding, Mr Cayman might have gone through his insurance company, but my client is absolutely um. Willing to, you know, talk to him so that he's he's made whole with any anything that might have been damaged, he and any other neighbors.
Okay, thank you, I mean, it's it's certainly out of our purview here, but uh. You know, I'm always willing to facilitate that conversation and.
Uh I I have a comment on that, you know, that the they're not playing, you know, they they play. They're not playing very good neighbor with all the damages and all this stuff that happened. And it's not just me, next door neighbor, neighbor down street, for for almost a year, nobody can use the backyard. Because it sunk, because we had fifteen feet deep holes that nobody can use, and it created dangerous situation, they put some. Uh after huge discussion, they brought some gravel, which sink again. Another four feet, they took out, I I had to uh I had to call survey. Uh for I had the first survey done, when I was bought, I bought the property and I had to do second survey, they mo- they took all the markers, there is no more markers. To my territory again, and I had, I just paid the surveyor to do it. You know, I don't know, maybe it's something wrong with me, but I I think that these people are not good neighbors and uh. Happened there is no.
We've lost Mr. Was, I think we lost him, but uh that was his time.
Yeah, Mr Chairman, well, all I can I can say on that is uh, you know, that's, I'm not aware of those issues, and it, as you said, it's it's outside the purview of this board, but I. I can certainly offer to get involved with my client um to to. Engage with the neighbors to see what what issues are out there and how to resolve them.
Yeah, we'd appreciate that, counsel, um again, it's it's out of our jurisdiction, but uh. You know, these things often come up in our meetings, so uh anyway, we could help that process uh happen. Uh I'm there.
Okay. If I may, if I may, just just add to that, so we we I, cause I I became aware of some. Let's call them missteps at the onset of construction that we weren't involved in, and we were called in and are now. Um making regular visits, and I think that um. Uh you know, from my vantage, the the project site has been uh completely cleaned up and is is um. Is being operated in a very professional manner, and this has been since uh probably about February. And there's been a lot of contact with the construction office over this, and um my understanding uh uh as of. A few days ago is that all is going to plan, and there's not an issue with. Um the construction office, uh I think that some of these uh neighbor issues may be from um from before. Um some of these, some of these changes were were put into place at the beginning of this year.
Okay, thank you, Mr Garber, we appreciate it.
Um sir, I'd like to speak.
Uh could you raise your right hand? Do you swear any testimony you give tonight's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name and give us your home address, please?
My name is Rajeshwari Samant, and I'll spell that for you, it's R, like in Robert, A J E S H. W A R I, last name Samant, S A M A N T, and the address is two five eight A. Fairmount Avenue, Jersey, Sadi, Jersey.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, ma'am, we have three minutes for you.
All right, um sir, I'd like to add to the uh testimony that a neighbor of mine gave a few minutes ago. Um there are three items that are being requested in this um. Um session, there uh is one for variance for the uh parking. The second is for the roof deck, and the third, as I see it here, is any additional approvals. Um without notice, so let me address the parking first. Um as you saw, Mr Farber himself was very surprised that there were just five units in a uh building. Of fifty units where the requirements requirement is point two per unit, which would make it ten, and we're only having five. I remember reaching out to the planning commission and said to them, uh how is it that you allow only five? That sounds like a ridiculous situation for a building that has fifty, and they said to me then that. It was because the five parking spots were being offered as zipcar, and they considered it as um a public transportation. And I thought that was um laughable too, uh Mr Garber thought five parking spots were laughable, and I think the idea of the. Um zipcar was laughable, but you know, they said they'd already signed, there wasn't much one could do at that point. And I thought about it, well, at least five zipcars are fine, zipcars are used as public transportation, and there isn't one in this. Um neighborhood, the closest one is at Grove Street, and they close at certain point, so. That would have been a difficult um, and that would have been a a reasonable accommodation. Um now they're thinking of getting rid of those five um zipcars, so just to. Uh give you a little heads up, the idea of the five um parking spots was considered to be zipcars and therefore a public transport. Um and they're going to get rid of that and zero parking spots, I can see that all of you are surprised with that, so that is one thing, I'd like to have the five parking spots. Um for them to say that they are trying to increase um retail on um on uh. Room Street, uh there is plenty of retail on Bergen Avenue, it is a very busy street, and like. Uh council person uh Gangadin just said, what about the traffic there, so if you go on Bergen Avenue where there is retail. It is impossible to cross the street, impossible to park a car, they're double parked, it is very difficult, so. That proposition doesn't seem to make sense, because one can always go to Bergen Avenue for um. Uh for um retail, um and to get rid of five precious parking spots. Is um not the wise uh thing to do, um and it'll also add on to retail traffic on the street, so that's the. Uh other point that I have, uh as for the uh deck, um they are properties are very close, we have very small narrow properties. You should take a look at the um aerial view, so there are four houses at the back of this development. And they're very small, because we have a very small yard, um. And if there is any noise, even when there is noise during construction, it carries over into our houses. The bedrooms of which face this construction, this development, so a little noise um disturbs us. And this is a very small community of um small people, all of us work, uh one of our neighbors. Comes home at seven thirty, and we work so hard to try and make it to your meetings, because we have to work and come running, I came home at. Uh six P M, had a quick bite, and I've been sitting here to get this meeting. So this is a small community, and we cannot afford to take noise, and in addition to it, we can't sit and but argue with anybody, because one. Like one of my neighbors just told you, um this building has started doing construction on our. Uh on the area behind us without our permission, they did not have our permission, they didn't have it in paper. They did not have our permission, they didn't have it in paper, I don't know how they were even allowed to do the construction, but they've started it. Our yards, unlike what Mr. uh, Gaber just said, is still completely wrecked. Um, our foundation seems to have sunk, they were requested, the developers were requested by the Department of Buildings to do a survey, engineering survey and to show it to the new neighbors so that we know that our, um, our, um, building is not, uh, structurally in danger of falling, now, my.
Ma'am, I do, I do need to cut you off, that we're way over.
Sorry about that, but.
That's okay, thank you.
So, yes, um, these are all the problems we have and therefore we would like to deny all the, one quick thing, uh.
That, ma'am, I, I'm sorry, I have to cut you off, you're, we're way past your three minutes.
Running Val Valkarfski.
Hey Val, let's where you in?
Good evening, yep.
Do you swear any testimony you give tonight's gonna be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And for the record, could you state it by name and give us your address, please?
Of course, Valeri Wierchowski, that's V A L E R I Y, last name Wierchowski, that's V E R K H O V S K I Y. Address fifty-five A Gardner Avenue. Jersey City.
Val, always a pleasure, uh, we have three minutes for you.
My pleasure, Councilman, um, good evening and, uh, fellow board, uh, fellow board, uh, good evening. Um, I had the, the pleasure of, uh, uh, being at this, um, at the prior application, I remember what was, um, presented, uh, I am also a part of Bergen Community United, um, I, um, was in the community meetings, uh, several community meetings about this application, um, years ago. I don't even recall when, but it was years ago at this point, um, so I'll share some light in terms of the, um, the five cars, um, the five cars were for zip cars, for rent the cars. Um, the basis of it was not for the, uh, public, but it was for the residents of the building. Um, that, the idea was, um, where would these residents park? And, um, that's where the, uh, five car rent the car came about, that was their idea. That was prior to VIA, uh, coming a thing, um, where VIA, you know, that whole ride sharing concept into the equation. Um, so, truth be told, I, that's pretty much the same thing in my opinion. I do like the renderings better than the previous one, um, in terms of just an overall look. I feel really bad for, uh, my neighbors who are, uh, suffering because of the prior application, um, they should definitely reach out to the council about that, um, you know, but, uh, in terms of the application as is, I do think red, uh, the commercial property, uh, commercial on Monticello is more appropriate than five zip cars when VIA is, um, uh, around, VIA is available to the residents, um, so as the application as is, I do think it's a better idea, better, uh, application than the one that was approved previously. Uh, but besides that, um, you know, I do ask for it to be, if it could be approved and, uh, you know, I do look forward to seeing this building built. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Val, always, always a pleasure, ma'am.
My pleasure, thank you.
Running Q O S G.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you and I can't see you.
I was calling specifically for six ten Communipaw Avenue, um, I've been raising my hand and for some reason it hadn't popped up at all, um. Can I talk now or it would have to be a different time?
It would have to be a different time, actually, that's, uh, that item has been carried to our December thirteenth meeting, sir.
Okay.
So, you won't get new notice, but that'll be on the, the December thirteenth meeting.
Understood, would it be the same link?
Uh, no, it'll be a new link, um. If you, are you familiar with the city's web portal?
I have not, this is the first time I logged on. Okay, it's like, my brother just gave me, okay, he knows how to connect, we're good.
I, I know, it's, it's a heavy lift sometimes getting on that web portal, um, you don't follow that, we get the agendas emailed to us, but, uh, yeah, that'll have the link on the city's web portal there.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
See you in a couple of weeks.
See you in a couple of weeks, bye.
Promoted Nayoko Tani.
You can unmute and turn your video on. Nayoko.
Hello, can you hear me?
I can hear you, can you turn your video on?
Um, I'm sorry, I'm not very familiar with, uh, dealing with zoom.
It should be right next to where you press to unmute, there's one that looks like.
Oh, okay, okay, yes, okay.
Perfect, I see you now and I hear you, I just wanna swear you in, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is gonna be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And for the record.
I do.
Could you state and spell your name and give us your home address, please?
Okay, um, my name is N A O K O T A N I, Nayoko Tani. And, uh, address is two five six Paramount Avenue, uh, Judge, the New Judge, yes.
Ms. Tani, good evening, we have three minutes for you.
Okay, uh, I'm sorry, my English is not, you know, great, you know, it's.
That's fine.
I have a limited vocabulary, well, um, first of all, I supported, uh, the, uh, first and second, my neighbor, you know, um, Boris and Raji. I totally supported their opinion and I'm not very happy about their project. Also, um, I don't like the idea removing, uh, five parking, parking spot and I don't like the idea uh, they're gonna build, you know, roof, roof deck. Um, that's really, you know, gonna be affect, you know, our quality of life, I think. And, um, well, that's all, I really don't like their project, I mean, from the beginning, uh, they changed their project manager, so now it's better, I have better, you know, manager. So it's getting better than before, but I'm still not happy about their project. I mean, I, there is no real communication between the, our neighbor and, um, building owner or building project. I mean, developer, you know, I can see the I, um, I don't know, um, we don't communicate very well. You know, there is a two side, you know, neighbor and the project. That's all.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Tani, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Promoted Damian.
Uh, good evening, everyone.
Are you able to, uh, turn your video on?
Yes, I just turned it on, let me know if you see me.
I can see you, I can hear you, I just wanna swear you in. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight's gonna be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, could you state it by your name and give us your home address, please?
Uh, first name's Damian, last name's Wiedzorak, W I E C Z O R E K, and I reside on three seventy-four Halliday Street.
Thank you.
Good evening, we have three minutes for you.
Good evening, I'm originally actually joining in for another matter, I just wanna show, uh, my support for Mr. Kamen and the opposition of the request. Um, that's the only statement I wanna make during this time, uh, we hear this, it's one of the reasons I'm in this meeting today, we're dealing with a similar issue. And that developers get away with a little bit too much affecting our quality of life and dealing with these ongoing problems. That's pretty much it on my end.
Okay, thank you, sir, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else from the public, if you'd like to comment on this application, please raise your hand. And if you're calling in, press star nine to raise your hand. Anybody else?
For Chair, seeing no more public, I move to close the public.
Second.
Uh, actually, we did get, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Prinzari. Got her hand up there.
Ooh, you got it in the nick of time.
True.
Promoted Councilwoman.
I'd promote her anyway, to be honest.
I would too.
Good evening, Councilwoman, I just wanna. I just wanna swear you in. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight's gonna be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Mary, good to see you, we usually have a three minute time limit, but, uh, the floor is yours.
I will be super brief, good evening, everyone, good to see you all, hope you had a great holiday, um, just very briefly, um, like, um, like Richard Gerber and, um, I also inherited this project, this just became the new part of Ward B recently when they, um, did the redistricting, so I was not there for the previous iterations of this. Um, I have been in on a couple of community meetings since and there has been some mixed response to this, to be honest, um, but for my purposes here tonight, um, I have not spoken with Boris, but I have spoken with Raji and I have spoken with Tom Lean, not, um, with you Chuck, but I know that we are getting them together with the owner, um, to rectify all of these problems and I just wanna make sure that that is on the record. Chuck, while you did not say that, I did get that from Tom and I thought he was gonna be here tonight to get that on, um, so I'm not sure how this is going to land, but I just wanna let, um, Boris and Raji know that we are here to support you in that, reach out to my office anytime. Um, because this is a very serious issue and, um, you know, developers, when they come in and do these projects should be good neighbors, I know you might not have been the other one, but this is, you know, this, this is key to coming into neighborhoods, you're not creating neighborhoods, you're moving into them with these buildings. So I just wanna make sure that as of tomorrow, we get these conversations together and you guys do whatever you need to do to cure the problems that these residents are having. So that's it, thank you.
Abs- absolutely. I, I wasn't aware that Tom had that conversation with you, but I'll, you know, reiterate what I said earlier and going through your office, I think is, is, you know, a terrific means to, to get it done.
Yep, yep, so, um, Raji, I don't know if you're still on, if you can put me in touch with Boris, I know I said I was done, now I'm really done. Um, but we'll continue that conversation tomorrow, thank you all, hope you're not on too late, have a good night.
Thanks, Mary, you too.
Thanks, Councilwoman.
All righty, uh, we do have one more hand up.
Running Alexandra.
How's it going, I just wanna swear you in before we speak, okay?
Yeah.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight's gonna be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And for the record, could you state it by your name and give us your home address, please?
Sure, Alexandra Nagy, A L E X A N D R A, N A G Y, three seventy-four Halliday Street.
Thank you.
Ms. Nagy, good evening, we have three minutes for you.
Okay, I was just wanted to respond, um, my, my, I wanted to give my support to Boris, um, in regards to the parking and the apartment buildings coming in. This has been an ongoing issue for the city for at least the past, uh, five years, um, especially with traffic. Um, everything has been, um, like, like, really bad and just all these new apartment buildings coming in is just adding to the problem. So that's what I wanted to state.
Okay, thank you, we appreciate your comment.
Okay, thanks.
All right, anybody else from public, if you'd like to comment, please raise your hands.
Okay, Mr. Chair, seeing no more public, I move to close the public.
Second.
Okay, motion is made in second, a public is closed. Um, Tim, this is yours, do you want to, uh, follow up?
Yeah, um, after, uh, looking at, uh, uh, the, the submitted site plan amendment. Um, city plan was very pleased to see a lot of the changes that were made, uh, by Mr. Garber, uh, with the architecturals. Uh, we were happy with the look of the building, um, uh, the removal of the parking and the added retail use we felt was good, given this situation and given the location on Monticello. I do, um, uh, understand what many of the members of the public are saying in terms of uh, the way the building was being constructed in the first place and I do implore that people reach out to their council uh, person and also the building department in the city of Jersey City because ultimately, they are the ones that are, um, enforcing the rules, uh, considering, uh, ongoing construction of the city. Um, and, uh, overall, the planning is, uh, very pleased with the way this project is pivoting towards a, uh, more, uh, compliant, um, development, uh, considering the, uh, recent, uh, master plan changes and approval in twenty twenty. Um, city plan approves the application as presented and, uh, we can vote on that.
Okay, thanks, Tim, we appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make the motion to approve case P two two dash one four three, as presented to our board here tonight.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for people.
Please, Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
Yeah, I'm, um, I'm, for the record, just, uh, wanted to say that I, I hope that, um, Mr. Harrington, the applicant does does reach out to Councilwoman's, uh, office because there are, there were a couple, a few people who came up, uh, as you saw that were very concerned, so, uh, you know, being a good neighbor is always very important and we, um, we really, uh, uh, see, enjoy seeing that, so I, I, I'll vote I.
Uh, Commissioner Lipsky.
Yeah, like, uh, the doctor said, uh, I'm encouraged that the Councilwoman has been on this and, uh, fairly thoroughly and is looking to continue to shepherd this into a, a good project, so, and then I also trust that, uh, Mr. Harrington will communicate with, uh, his associate and we'll get this done, I vote I.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Yeah, I just wanna thank the public for coming out and speaking out, uh, this evening. And I encourage the open communication between the developer and the existing neighbors there, the good neighbors, um. I felt the variance requested are within, in line with the master plan and so my vote is I.
Commissioner Cruz.
I vote I.
And Chairman Lex.
Yeah, I, I understand the neighbors', um, concerns, um, obviously, it's not our purview to, to handle, uh, any construction problems, that's the building department, um, and definitely reach out to, uh, Councilwoman Prinzari, uh, she's a great resource, she's got your back a hundred percent. Um, with that being said, I think this is a better project than it was before, um. Don't forget, removing that curb cut does create one more street parking space that's available to the public. Uh, the average street parking space, I believe, turns over four times a day. So, you know, we're providing a space that potentially four people per day will use. And that's, uh, public access, that's not access for private residents of this building. So, um, given that this is in the NC district, uh, I think it's more in line with our current master plan that, uh, promotes walkability and, uh, walkable retail. I, I think Mr. Garber's changes to the building, uh, aesthetically definitely make it a better project, so, uh, I'm gonna vote I.
All in favor, motion passes.
Okay, thank you, everybody, and, uh, it is nine oh six, we're gonna take a five minute break, uh, give Mike a break there and, uh, we'll be back at nine eleven. You know what, let's make that nine twelve, I don't like to say nine eleven. Okay. Okay, could we come to order again, everybody, please? And let's call item seventeen on the agenda is case P two-one dash zero three-five is a final major site plan with C variances for three sixty-two to three sixty-four Sixth Street.
Um, and, uh, Chairman, if you don't mind, we do have another applicant that has requested to carry, um. So I, uh, I just want to put on the record that I have received, uh, notification from the applicant's attorney on, uh, item twenty-one, case P twenty-two dash one fourteen, address five eighty-five Route four forty. They've requested to carry to the December thirteenth meeting.
Okay, thanks, Ken. So, uh, anybody from the public, if you're here for, uh, five eighty-five Route four forty, um, they will not be heard tonight. Uh, you will not receive new notice. This is your notice to, uh, appear at the December thirteenth meeting. And, uh, we appreciate you hanging there, and, uh, all right, let's move on. And, um, let's bring up Mr. Harrington. I think he's.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, uh, Council, we do have a conflict with, uh, our council. Um, he has to recuse himself on this project. Um, we do run into this from time to time. Um, I'm comfortable moving forward without counsel, but at any time, if we feel the need to, um, address something, we'll reserve that right to carry the application and, uh, consult with outside counsel.
Absolutely. That's, that's, uh, good with me.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman, just send me a text. I'm gonna step away.
Okay, you got it.
Thank you. So, um, yeah, for the record, Charles Harrington of Connell Foley, on behalf of the applicant, uh, there were notices provided, uh, here, uh, in connection with the requested variances. So I'd uh, assume that they're gonna be marked as A one.
Um, Francisco, can you, uh, confirm notice for us?
Yes, I'm also on receipt of the notice, and it also was posted on the data portal.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, yeah, we'll call that A one for notice.
Okay, so thank you. So, um, the, the project before you, uh, is, is, uh, for preliminary and, and, and the final major site plan with, with deviations. Uh, the property is located in the Ennis Jones, uh, redevelopment plan. That's a a plan that was developed, uh, a few years back, uh, with a bonus provision that, that, um, provides for, for bonus, uh, floors that would then, um, re-trigger a contribution towards improvements for the Ennis Jones Park. Um, so that's what our, our client is proposing here tonight. Um, but we are proposing a seven-story building with seventeen dwelling units and seven parking spaces. So we are, are requesting a, a deviation for the number of stories permitted from seven, uh, from six to seven. Uh, but we are, uh, proposing a building that's within the permitted height. Uh, so we're actually lower than the sixty-eight feet that's permitted. We're at like sixty-four feet, seven inches. And the reason or driving force behind this is uh, the property is in, in a flood zone area where it's about six or seven feet to, to meet the base flood elevation. So you could have, um, and, and parking is not required on this lot because it's not seventy-five feet wide. So you could have kind of this, you know, no man's land of like six, seven feet, um, at the base. Um, and with a six-story building with, or, you know, a six-story building with no parking. Our proposal is to bring that up a little bit, um, so that, that parking level then counts as a story. Um, provide for parking at the, the grade level where you cannot have habitable area, uh, and then have the six stories above it. So you're, you're gonna, we're not asking for any additional residential floors that would otherwise be permitted. Um, we're not asking for any additional height that would otherwise be permitted. Uh, but, but we are asking for the, the relief for the seventh story. We are asking for, uh, relief, uh, for variances in connection with the drive aisle width and, and some bollards or, or protection areas where we have a different configuration, uh, around the, the garage area. Uh, and then we are asking for a lot coverage, um, deviation. Uh, we're not, it's, it's interesting in that we are, there's a fifteen-foot required rear yard setback. We meet that, but we are slightly over the coverage of eighty-five percent versus eighty, and we're, we've lined up with the building next door. Uh, so it's really, you know, you'll see the, the, the presentation, but it's, it's, it's about, it's about the parking kind of, you, you know, at the end of the day, you know, is it a better building with parking or a building without parking? Because you could have a building the same size or a little bit taller with the same amount of units. Um, so with that said, um, I have, uh, I'm gonna start with Anthony Vandermark here. Uh, we do have our civil engineer, but, um, I'm gonna move forward with Anthony, and then, um, uh, we have Caroline, um, Rostel is our, is our planner. So we're gonna keep, uh, Anthony, uh, on the sideline, uh, due to time constraints.
Um, Chuck, is EL the, the other? Is, is that part of your team, EL? Uh, or?
No, you got Jake, Jake Modesto is our civil, uh, engineer, um, Anthony Vandermark. And then, uh, oh wait, Charles Height is on this. I'm sorry. Caroline's, uh, busy enough.
Okay.
All right, so I'll swear on Anthony. Uh, do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
For the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Sure, that is Anthony C. Vandermark Jr. Vandermark, V A N D E R M A R K.
Thank you.
Mr. Vandermark, good evening. Your license is current tonight?
Good evening, Chair. Yes, my license is current tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. You're qualified.
Fantastic. Thank you. Um, I'm going to quickly share my screen.
And, uh, should we be marking this as A two, Anthony, as a slide deck?
Yes, this will be a slide deck, so let's mark this as A two.
Okay, and, uh, Mr. Vandermark, how many slides are in there?
We have thirteen slides in the total deck, and I should be using, uh, approximately ten of them.
Okay, so let's call it ten slides, and please, uh, just forward those over to, uh, the Planning Department tomorrow, if you could.
Will do.
All right, thank you.
Sure. Uh, again, good evening, everyone. Um, three sixty-two, three sixty-four Sixth Street, uh, as Chuck had previously mentioned, is in the Ennis Jones, uh, redevelopment planned area. It's actually in Zone Two, which is, uh, the mid-rise transition zone. Um, it's also in the bonus B area. Okay, so the baseline redevelopment plan, uh, zoning, uh, the permitted height is five stories and fifty-eight feet, um, and that is above the design flood elevation. It's previously mentioned that the project is in the flood plain. So with the bonus B provision of the redevelopment plan, you are permitted six stories and sixty-eight feet above the designed flood elevation. Because of where our building is situated within the flood plain, uh, if you measured from grade, we have the ability to go up to seventy-three feet and five inches in total height, is proposed tonight. Again, as Chuck had mentioned, is within the permitted volume. It's actually lower than the permitted volume. So we're proposing a seven-story building at sixty-four feet, seven inches, where sixty-eight feet is permitted. So the difference of, by, uh, three feet, five inches, and seventy feet from the sidewalk, it's great. Uh, the slide you have before you, we have a five thousand square foot lot, which is sort of centrally located on Sixth Street, which is on the north side. Uh, Brunswick Street happens to be on the eastern side to the right. Uh, and to the left, we have Division Street, now, which is to the west. Um, we, the existing structure, as you can see here, is a hundred percent impervious lock coverage, no stormwater detention. The adjacent property, uh, to the west, uh, again, is at a hundred percent lock coverage at the first floor and eighty-five percent lock coverage at the upper floors. Property immediately to the east, again, is at a hundred percent lock coverage, uh, impervious with no stormwater detention. As you can see here, the, the block here is kind of a dense block, uh, from a structure standpoint. Directly behind our property to the north, you have the Brunswick Center and also the Brunswick School, uh, directly behind us. Slide top right, uh, which will be slide two, three D site view. Uh, again, uh, we have a six-story multifamily to the west, which is to the left of our property, and to the east, the two-story, uh, mixed-use building. Brunswick Center is directly behind us. Uh, the vacant property, uh, in front of us happens to be a parking lot and a car wash, which is at the intersection of Division Street and Sixth Street. This property is earmarked at the back end of the, uh, newly created uh, embankment redevelopment planned area. Uh, that is not approved yet. However, that property will be included. Um, that property, uh, is currently earmarked for a six-story and seventy-two-foot-high structure from grave. Slide three, we have, uh, the existing multifamily building with residential over parking. Slide directly in the center and the second row is our one-story masonry warehouse building. Uh, take note that there's an existing curb cut, uh, inside the side of the property. As part of this application, we're gonna reduce that curb cut to twelve feet. We're providing two new street trees, and we are providing one additional parking space uh, in front of, uh, our property now, within our property boundary. Uh, slide, uh, number three, second row here is the two-story mixture structure. Uh, slide six, bottom left-hand corner, again, the same as a one-story, uh, masonry garage adjacent to, uh, the parking area for the Brunswick Center. Directly across the street in slide seven, again, uh, is earmarked as part of the western part of the tail end of the embankment redevelopment plan. And again, the car wash in the corner is included in that, uh, redevelopment planned area. General overview of the project. Again, uh, we are proposing seven stories, but within a permitted height of sixty-four feet, seven inches, uh, above the, uh, design flood elevation. We're proposing seventeen units, uh, of the program. Uh, before you, you have one one-bedroom, four one-bedrooms plus ten, five two-bedrooms, and seven three-bedrooms. As Chuck had previously mentioned, uh, the density is permitted. We actually could have, uh, more units as part of this proposal. Um, the program, uh, you have before you here tonight actually leans, uh, towards the, uh, larger unit sizes opposed to a very dense, smaller unit size. We're proposing, uh, seven parking spaces. As Chuck had previously mentioned, we have, uh, a request for deviation for the drive-al width. We're proposing a twenty-foot, uh, ten-inch drive-al where twenty-two feet would be permitted. Um, as part of this application, we are providing, uh, a stormwater detention system with the latest, uh, uh, DCA or DEP requirements. We are proposing a extensive green roof at one thousand two hundred and fifty square feet, uh, a four hundred and fourteen square foot amenity space with three additional roof decks up top. The overall, uh, building, uh, end lock coverage is at eighty-five percent, as Chuck had previously mentioned. It's kind of a quirk in the, uh, zoning where fifteen feet, uh, is the required setback, and we comply with the rear yard setback of fifteen feet. Um, so the building aligns with the adjacent multifamily all the way to the west. Uh, the proposed project, uh, the original application had ten bicycle parking spaces, I think, to the, uh, to the chair's, uh, um, appreciation. I think we, we are increasing that, uh, with this new uh, exhibit that we have here this evening to eighteen proposed bicycle parking spaces, who are graded in one-to-one for bicycle parking. Um, and again, we are, uh, approximately, uh, uh, five foot five above the sidewalk level uh, within the AE flood plain zone. Just to discuss the, uh, the story, uh, height deviation request. Project to the left is what we're proposing. We are proposing a seven-story building, uh, parking at the first floor with six residential floors above. Six residential floors is permitted. The density is permitted, as previously stated. This application before you is at sixty-four feet, seven inches above design flood elevation, seventy feet above the sidewalk. That's the proposed project. The permitted project, as you can see here, there's a gray area below the building. This, this proposed project, if parking was not, uh, being proposed, would require a five-foot, five-inch elevation, uh, of the first residential floor. And then you could have your permitted six residential floors, but you can still have a three-foot-five taller building than what we're requesting this evening. So what we're thinking here is that with an additional, uh, four foot seven inches, uh, we thought it was a sensible design by providing parking, uh, and not providing this kind of void space below the residential area. How do you achieve a building like this, uh, that's permitted? You would have a lobby that's accurate with an elevator system and stairs, and then that would take you up to the first residential floor, which is above the design, uh, flood elevation. So the proposal on the left is actually the volume is smaller than the permitted proposal or permitted, uh, use, which would be on the right. The whole, uh, site plan impact, as part of this proposal, we are proposing all-new curving, all-new sidewalks, uh, two new street trees in accordance with the Jersey City forestry standards. Providing a twelve-foot curb cut, as you can see, it's more towards the western side of the property with a seven-story structure, but with a height less than what's permitted. We're proposing a foot, fifteen-foot rear yard setback with, uh, one public and one private, uh, rear yard, uh, outdoor space. Working your way, uh, inside the actual project, we have a first-floor parking garage with a stormwater detention system directly below the drive-al. Uh, we have one ADA compliant elevator, uh, two sets of Vgress stairs, uh, an eighteen bicycle parking space. Room located, uh, towards the front, adjacent to the sidewalk. room located, uh, towards the front adjacent to the sidewalk. We're proposing seven parking spaces. Three of them happen to be compact at eight feet wide and sixteen feet deep. Uh, one ADA, uh, van compliance space with three standard spaces at nine feet by eighteen feet. As part of this application, we're requesting a deviation, uh, for the approach uh, to the recess garage door. So the garage door will be four feet back and that complies with the redevelopment plan. We're providing a protection, uh, landscape area, curved area, uh, to the front of that garage, to the eastern side. However, because the entry point is on the western side of the property, uh, we cannot provide protection planter or bollard area, just simply isn't any room. So the, uh, western side of the garage approach, uh, has no pedestrian protection, uh, in the, uh, in a, in a hardscape sense. However, we are providing an in-the-ground LED lighting strip uh, with an audible indicator light at eye level. So all the pedestrian, uh, and safety improvements will be as part of this application. However, we're requesting one deviation, uh, to the left side of the garage door because we cannot provide that, uh, that protection area, uh, adjacent to the entryway. Going back to the first floor plan, all the way to your left, graphic number one, we are providing two, uh, three hundred and seventy-five, uh, square foot rear yards. Uh, the one to the right or to the eastern side will be accessed from the, uh, second floor, our larger three-bedroom unit. And the, uh, rear yard to the, uh, western side, two hundred and seventy-five square feet will be a common rear yard. Now, just to remind the board here that this rear yard now happens to be, um, ten feet below the adjacent property to the west because that is at a hundred percent and it's twenty feet, uh, below the adjacent property to the east because that's at a hundred percent. So what we have here is a fifteen-foot, uh, deep by fifty-foot wide, uh, kind of set-in donut here, um, for the two rear yards, uh, as part of this project. The second floor, uh, which is unique to the upper floors is a, uh, three units. Um, again, the back unit happens to be a three-bedroom, uh, with rear yard access at one thousand seven hundred and sixty-six square feet. We have two units, uh, to the front adjacent to Sixth Street, the one-bedroom to the left-hand side. Uh, it has the elevated electrical room because of the floodplain. So we are proposing one one-bedroom as part of this project. It's at the second floor. It's at seven hundred and eighty-five square feet. So as far as one-bedrooms go, definitely ample size, one-bedroom. We're proposing a two-bedroom, uh, to the right side or to the eastern side of the front here at one thousand thirty-two square feet. Floor three through six are typical. Um, each floor has one bedroom, uh, plus den at eight hundred and fifty-three square feet. We have one two-bedroom at, at one thousand thirty-two square feet and one three-bedroom at seventeen seventy-six. Taking you up to the top floor. We're proposing two units, uh, on the quote-unquote seventh floor, but again, within the permitted volume. Uh, as per the redevelopment plan, we're proposing two three-bedrooms. One at one thousand seven hundred and seventy-six and one thousand nine hundred and ninety-two. Uh, both of them have individual stair access to private roof decks. So the roof, as you can see here, uh, green sections, uh, indicated are extensive green roofing area. We're proposing one thousand two hundred and fifty square foot extensive green roof. As everyone knows, that is to cut down the heat-out effect and also, uh, to slowly discharge the collected rainwater on the roof into the roof leader system that takes you down to detention system and slowly releases it to municipal system. So if ever project that had, uh, an existing one hundred percent impervious coverage, um, with no stormwater detention, now we have all these kind of green building techniques as part of this application. So the two private, uh, roof decks, uh, in graphic number two here, uh, labeled roof plan are at two hundred and sixty and two hundred and fifty square feet. And then as part of this application, we are proposing a larger, uh, five hundred, excuse me. Five hundred and nine square feet, uh, common area roof deck, which would be accessed from a four hundred and fourteen square foot amenity space. So we have to the northern portion of the, of the property, we have amenity space. Uh, we have common roof deck area. None of the extensive green roof areas are accessible from either the private or the public roof deck area. Uh, we are proposing, uh, the condensers, as you can see here, to the northwest portion of the roof. They will be screened, uh, for many view. And taking you up now to the exterior of the building. We're proposing a predominantly, uh, as you see, it's an orange, uh, earth, uh, brick masonry at the lower floors and then we had a integrated gray weave, uh, ACM or, uh, aluminum composite material, uh, that is on the right-hand side and then caps the upper part of the building. So we have a, a masonry, uh, base with an ACM, uh, accent and another ACM in a lighter gray color. That's the horizontal banding. We're proposing a small entry canopy at three feet of projection. It's non-havoc area. Simple building, uh, numbers as part of this application, uh, and again, the driveway below the building numbers and canopy. The rear facade is two different kinds of cement board. It's graphic number two. As you can see, we have a horizontal lap siding with a vertical, uh, panelized siding to the rear. Um, taking you back through to the side elevations as part of this application. We have adjacent lot line facing windows, uh, on the eastern structure. Uh, so we had to create a three-and-a-half foot by thirty-foot wide light well. Um, that's indicated here on the eastern elevation. Uh, again, uh, as per the redevelopment plan and also, uh, for the fire code, uh, we had to have building separation at, at three-and-a-half feet, uh, by thirty feet where the pre-existing outline windows are. So we are, uh, we are respecting those as also we built them into the design that you have before you this evening. The western elevation has one small light well, uh, again, to, uh, have, uh, light and air to the back bedrooms within the floor plan. And we have an upper cement board that would be, uh, cladding of the upper bulkheads. From a, uh, from a shadow standpoint, um, our building is technically taller than adjacent multifamily to the west. So, uh, during certain periods of the day from morning to, uh, mid-afternoon, we will be casting a shadow on the upper portion of that building. Um, and again, we have, uh, basically we have the, uh, right-of-way, we have a vacant parcel directly across the street. And behind us, we have the Brunswick Center, uh, and the Brunswick School. Um, so we feel that, uh, you know, based on the positioning of a building, uh, and where the back of our building aligns with the existing multifamily to the west, uh, I think we've lessened the amount of impact, uh, possible on our adjacent neighbors and still be within the permitted volume of the redevelopment plan. Uh, this concludes my presentation for tonight.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Vandermark. Uh, I appreciate the detailed presentation. Uh, I don't have any questions. Anybody else?
Nope.
All right. Thank you. And I do appreciate bike spaces. Nice work.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, then I'm going to move right, right into Charles Height, uh, to, uh, address the requested variances.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, Mr. Vandermark, if you could, just stop your, uh, screen share. Thank you.
Hey, hello, can you hear me?
We can. And, uh, if you could just, uh, confirm that you've been sworn in already tonight and are still under oath and still qualified.
Confirmed. I know I'm still under oath and I am still, uh, a licensed planner in New Jersey.
Amazing. Okay, thank you.
All right. Um, so, uh, good evening again, board, um, board members. Uh, this application, um, we had, uh, discussed the design of it back and forth internally, um, uh, on a, quite a number of different, uh, layouts with, uh, Mr. Vandermark and the, the reality was that given the floodplain, given the zoning, um, there's an unutilized space, uh, at the ground level, um, that was essentially just going to be existing, um, in the building. And, and the building could be taller, um, up to the, the maximum that's been, been, uh, cited on the plans. Um, this proposal, uh, takes some of the space at the ground level that, that unutilized space and, and utilizes for parking, for ground level parking. So that really is, is the, the, the crux of, uh, the, the request, request for variant, variance relief. Um, we do, uh, we are requesting, uh, variance for number of stories where in, in the mid, uh, mid-rise transition zone, there's, uh, five stories permitted. What's being proposed, uh, is seven. Um, the ground floor that's being provided for parking, uh, is one of those additional stories. Um, all the residential units, uh, as Mr. Vandermark, uh, could, uh, testify to, could be accomplished in a compliant, uh, building height and, and building layout. Uh, I just wanted to reiterate, um, for the board that, uh, these aren't small units, the bedroom mix as Mr. Vandermark, uh, mentioned before, um, we're proposing a total of, um, seven three-bedrooms, uh, five two-bedrooms, uh, and a total of one, one bedroom. So, uh, the, the mix is actually all very much on the larger size. Um, and the whole intent is to create for, uh, larger units, possibly family units. Um, and really that began the need of, of the, the conversation of the need of parking. Um, it's, it's very often that, that families might have the need for one vehicle. Um, and, and then we, we came to about, uh, using that space on the ground floor. So that's just part of the, the evolution of the, of the discussion on, on the relationship between the proposed parking and a number of stories. Um, as was mentioned before, in terms of the benefits outweighing the detriment with the number of stories. In my opinion, we are utilizing this property, this ground floor efficiently by providing that off-street parking, uh, and not providing a, a wasted, uh, crawl space, if you will, on the ground floor. Um, one other aspect with respect to the parking that I wanted to mention was exists currently, there are two roll-up doors and really almost a full lot with, um, of a curb cut. There's no street trees. Um, and it really is part of parcel of the old industrial building, that one-story building, um, that was, was shown earlier. Um, this application, uh, that I, I, um, if you calculate it's estimated to be about thirty-five feet of curb cut, this application reduces that to twelve feet. So while we are proposing off-street parking, it does substantially improve, um, the streetscape in terms of, of pedestrian safety and reducing curb cut. The zoning here in the Enos Jones, um, redevelopment plan, uh, only requires parking on lots that are seventy-five feet wide. What's being, for this lot is only fifty feet wide, so parking is not required. Um, but again, uh, we are proposing it as a benefit to the overall application, uh, and also reducing the curb cut. Um, the other deviations that are being requested, uh, as Mr. Vandermark mentioned, the, the coverage, um, we, this is actually an interesting case. It's, it's not often we run into it, but we do. Um, the bulk standards, uh, are being met with respect to, uh, front, rear and side yards. So for all intents and purposes, this proposed structure could occupy, um, this, any space, any mass on this, uh, any mass on this property. Um, the coverage is only permitted to be eighty percent though. So that kind of short changes, um, the, the development, uh, and allowing for what we, what we believe is a better layout for the larger units. So we are proposing eighty-five percent coverage. Um, and, and eighty percent is permitted. Uh, with respect to the coverage, as was mentioned, we're meeting all of the stormwater, green roof, sustainable measures in terms of the design on the property. So I think the benefits, um, by providing the larger layouts, uh, are offset by the, the proposed, uh, stormwater infrastructure on the property. Um, lastly, with respect to, uh, the actual parking layout, uh, these are minor. Um, we are proposing a narrower drive aisle, twenty feet, ten inches, as was mentioned, where twenty-four feet is required. Um, again, these are for strictly residential parking spaces. So vehicles that are entering and exiting out of this ground floor parking level will be very familiar with the turning movements, um, because they will, they will occupy them on a, on a regular basis. Um, and overall, there are going to be seven spaces proposed. Uh, if parking were required, nine spaces would be required. It's a half-space per unit. Um, so again, we're, we're utilizing that ground floor and essentially maximizing, uh, the ground floor, uh, for parking with respect to the seven spaces. Um, we wouldn't be able to achieve any more from a, a standard, um, surface level parking layout on this, on this property. Uh, that's the, the positive criteria as I see it with this application. Again, we're really trying to balance a better utilization of the ground floor and then that necessitates, um, the, the, the deviation being requested. Um, with respect to, uh, any substantial impacts, uh, this is in the Enos Jones redevelopment district. Um, it is in the, the mid-rise transition district. So, uh, we are transitioning along with the adjacent building to the west, which is six stories. The elevations that were shown, um, do provide for a, uh, a, um, overall level of, um, consistency with that building. So I do agree that we still are transitioning from what would be smaller buildings to the, uh, east, which are now zoned in the, um, RC, the residential, uh, C district, the RC three. Um, and that calls for four stories, three and four stories. So, um, the, I, I should also point out, Mr. Vandermark showed the elevations. Uh, the front facade does have a variety of materials that does help break up the mass and actually does elevate, uh, one of the materials closer to the six-story building. So I think from a design standpoint, we've transitioned the facade of the building to help break up that mass and to be integrated with that overall transition that's occurring along Sixth Street. Um, with respect to the, uh, any sort of substantial detriment to the general welfare, um, again, the building mass in terms of overall height and setbacks are being met. So the impact from the building mass would, would arguably be, be there with a different proposal without parking. So I don't believe that's a substantial impact from this design. Um, and I do believe that in this instance, given the reduction in the curb cut, the improvements along the streetscape, the two street trees, uh, the overall redevelopment of the property, uh, it all amounts to, uh, benefits that, that outweigh the detriments. Uh, and again, there's no substantial detriment to the, to the general welfare by providing the proposed parking. So that completes my testimony. I hope I walked through all the details, uh, about this application.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Height. I have no questions. Anybody else? All right. Thank you, sir.
Okay, so, um, I, I just again, for the record, I have our civil engineer available for any questions if the board has any questions, but otherwise that would complete our presentation.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, I don't think I have any, any engineering questions. Uh, anybody else?
No.
All right. Thank you guys. Uh, so at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment, please raise your hands. I see a couple already. If you're calling in and you want to comment, please press star nine to raise your hands.
Promoted Kivash.
Hello, how's it going?
Hey, how are you?
I just want to swear in before you speak, okay? If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
For the record, could you state and spell your name and give us your home address, please?
Yes, my name's Sivash Amadi. First name is C Y A V A S H. Last name is A H M A D I. And, um, I live at the neighboring property at three sixty-six Sixth Street in Jersey City, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Mr. Amadi, good evening. We have three minutes for you, sir.
Good evening Chairman Langson. Um, it's good to be here. I want to thank, um, all the board members for considering this application. And considering, um, the, the issues that it presents for, um, the neighbors, I think the, um, applicant stressed that it was, um, that, that the, um, building could be taller, but what they're leaving out is the fact that, um, they can't do that. Um, and that's, that's really only half the story. Um, you know, they, they really can't build taller if they have seven stories and they're already getting a bonus, um, for the six-story. So, um, with the seven-story, what they're really doing is, um, it, it will block our views. Um, and, um, I, I don't think that's, that's fair. Um, and I don't think that's consistent with the neighborhood design. Um, their expert, uh, Mr. Height, I think did a good job of just describing how the design, um, fit in, but he didn't mention anything about how, um, it's going to obstruct our views and how they, um, could do the and how they um could do the same thing just without any parking. Um, so I don't think that they really need a bonus on a bonus. Um, and it's, it's really gonna be a, a big negative impact on, on our building. Um, I know I'm repeating myself a little bit, but they said that they're only building to sixty-four feet. But if you consider the roof that they're adding, it's closer to, I think, seventy-five feet. Um, and you know, we have twenty units and we're only six stories. So I don't understand why they can't um, you know, do something similar. And we also have parking. So I think there are other designs that are, that are feasible and seven parking spots, um, you know, considering the, the detriment to our property, which is twenty units. Um, I think the detriment outweighs um the benefit of those seven parking spots. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Amadi. We appreciate it.
Promoting E L.
How's it going? I just want to swear in. All right, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
For the record, could you state and spell your name and give me your home address, please?
Yes, Elliot Lesser, three sixty-six Sixth Street.
Thank you.
Mr. Lesser, good evening. We have three minutes for you, sir.
Good evening. Thank you. I'd like to open with thanks to the chairman, the vice chair, the commissioner, the entire council for their service. Uh, Jersey City's gone through an incredible growth, uh, and that positive change has really made it a wonderful place to live. Uh, with that said, there are rules in place to protect our neighborhood and its residents and protect it from overcrowding and to maintain a certain neighborhood feeling and design. It's important that as the community becomes a little bit more crowded, that we fill it with neighbors that are good and try honestly to support this goal. To be a good neighbor, one must be fair. One should strive to follow and work within each of the rules that are set forth ev- for everyone to follow and each with a good reason to protect and maintain a certain quality of life. As the builders mentioned, turning down more units turns down additional bonus funding for our park. However, it's not as simple as this. Mr. Vandemark mentioned that they would be, it would be sensible, they thought, to add a story with parking. And yet, this is one of the reasons for the need for a deviation. And it contradicts the board's mission of a walkable community. What we have here is developers that are more interested in maximizing profits and the number of units sold. We've heard some issues from the same team throughout this evening and prior week's meetings. In this instance, uh, by requesting seven-story deviation, they're not acting as good neighbors. They're making it sound like they're taking unutilized space due to flood zone and turning it into parking. Meanwhile, they could just do the same as their neighbors have done, who have a resident list round floor and five residential stories above it, not six. Instead, once again, they're putting profits before the community. Not only will it cast a dark shadow over the community, but it'll cast a dark shadow over future innocent and likely clueless home buyers that are going to be hardworking taxpayers. There are some good things that this builder has designed, like working within the height restriction, uh, the flood planning and building the green roof. This can be a great building, but only at six total stories and following the same rules that its neighbors have followed. Tonight, this board can rise above and deny this deviation to stand up for good, hardworking neighbors and taxpayers in the neighborhood. To ensure that good new builders follow the same fair rules as everyone else has. I urge the council to please deny this deviation, let them build a nice fair building within the neighborhood rules that our community will be proud to call its neighbors. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Promoting Robinson Co.
How's it going? That's why I swear in, okay? If you could raise your right hand. You swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name and give us your address, please?
Robinson Co., uh, three six six Sixth Street, Jersey City, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Mr. Co, good evening. We have three minutes for you, sir.
I try to be efficient because I've joined three of these meetings as this was uh you know, sort of punted uh with preservation of notice and getting used to the terms. And so I know the chairman likes to run an efficient meeting. I won't belabor some of the points that um that my neighbors um Si and Elliot have said, but I think, you know, given consideration to some of the developments and you guys have, you know, the board, kudos to the board and past boards for passing some really great, you know, architecture and, and plans that really fit in with the community. Um, thinking about art spaces and cultural centers. Um, but, but more importantly, I think it's also thinking about, you know, the, the current residents that live in the area and, and how this would obstruct our view. Because as much as I still have uh uh eastern, south, uh northeastern view of Manhattan, it through our rooftop, I think we also appreciate the beautiful downtown Jersey City that I've grown to love over the last eight years that I've been in this area uh of, of the Enos Jones Park area. I'm also a board member of the Enos Jones Park Association that um where Adam Palulock wrote, uh, worked very closely with Tanya uh to develop the Enos Jones redevelopment um plan, which has been great in terms of um sending, um, getting funding from developers to fund our Enos Jones Park, which is in much need of upgrades. Um, so we always appreciate uh new buildings developed along the Sixth Street corridor between Brunswick and Division. Um, definitely, this would be the second property that at least I know of that has been approved um to go forth. But I think it, it sets a precedent for other developers in the future to our left i- at three six uh six. I mean, I'm sorry, at three sixty, the parking, the empty parking lot across the street, down all the way to that car wash uh that I love. Um, and, and as well as Ziggy's around the corner, all these developments are still ripe for the, you know, ripe for the taking in terms of developers and developing their plan. And I think, and I'm urging the, the planning council to really think about the future of these areas. This is a really blank canvas. Yeah, we're not talking about one extra building in this one leftover lot. We have a lot more lot space to build up. And I think we should consider some of the residents and how do we fit in altogether in a way that our neighboring buildings actually can have the same view, uh, not be obstructed. Um, there are a lot of great developments that the planning council has passed even closer to the waterfront that have four to five stories with first floor residential, as Elliot has said. Some questions I did have um and less statements is just talking about pedestrian safety. Uh, whether it's COVID and the baby boom that came along with it, there, there is the Brunswick School that um that is down the corner from us. And you know, pedestrian, we have a high pedestrian uh um traffic, especially during school hours. So really considering um what this developer is going to do to ensure the safety of our children in the crossings, the, the crossing across uh the sidewalk across the street is empty parking lot and the sidewalk is not really a walkable sidewalk. It's, it's not, it's not um sort of manicured and, and maintained by anyone or the city. Um, so I, it would be dangerous for uh my three-year-old and eighteen-month-old to walk there. Um, the second piece is really considering, you know.
I, I'm sorry, I do have to cut you off. That was your three minutes, sir.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Morning, Unico.
Hello?
Hi. Are you able to turn your video on?
I should be.
There it is. Perfect. All right. I'll swear in. Uh, do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name and give us your address, please?
My name is Yunhua Cole. First name is Y U N H W A. Last name is K O. And I also live at three six six Sixth Street.
Thank you.
Uh, the six-story multifamily building that was referred to several times on the presentation um before us. And uh
We are, I'm sorry to cut you off. We have three minutes for you.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. I can only echo, you know, all the great um interventions by my very well-spoken and eloquent colleagues. Um, we are very concerned about the obstruction of our views from the rooftop, which was, you know, great benefit of moving um into this building two years ago. Um, I'm also concerned about uh how the developer is going to manage um all the noise and dust that's come out of the construction given the Brunswick School that's right behind us. Um, and you do realize that the kids use the parking lot as their outdoor activity space. Um, so I would like to know a little bit more about that, how you plan to minimize um that disturbance. And finally, I just have to disagree that the um aesthetics of the new development is going to be um consistent um with what we currently have on the block. It, it will be different. It's um it was visible in the plan that you shared earlier and um it's just something that we have to point out. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Co. Anybody else from the public? If you'd like to comment, please raise your hand. If you are calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand. Anybody else?
No more public. I move to close the public.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Uh, this is Francisco's. Uh, Francisco, you want to add anything?
That's good. Mr. Chairman, could I just very briefly address some of the comments again? Cause yeah, I want to stress again that, that the project that's being proposed, it is, you know, seven stories. But again, we could have a six-story building here at sixty-eight feet as of right with no parking. That, that would, could be an alternative. So you're looking at the same bulk and the, and, and even a little bit higher here. So you know, with good neighbors and stuff, we're, we think the parking is a benefit, not only to the project, but, but the immediate area here. So that you have some off-street parking uh to provide for the part of, because in this, you know, obviously there's a lot of areas that, that you don't want parking. But like the, the project next door has, has ground floor parking and uh actually, we're familiar with it, myself and Anthony and Charles, because we worked on that. That was a uh, a variance, uh, um, a project that was approved by with a height variance when the NC zoning was in place there. Uh, and, and we provided for the, the on, the uh, the onsite parking. So we're not, again, we're not proposing a building higher than what could be. We're not proposing a building with more units that, that you could have. We have larger units. There's no density standard here. So you, you could have thirty units in here with no parking. That's not what we're trying to do here. We trying to keep this isn't, is a nice growing, strong neighborhood with a lot of families. And that's, that's why you're seeing these types of uh units. So um, we're not proposing more residential floors than what would otherwise be permitted. Um, so you know, we think it's, it's a great project and also kind of as an aside too, if you had six floors and, and no parking, you, you have uh a bonus of two units times the, the contribution of thirty-five units and a, a, a a unit on the sixth floor. In this instance, uh, you know, one of, one of the unintended consequences here is you, now you've got five. You're, you're gonna, uh, the developer would have to pay thirty-five thousand per five, at, at five units. So it's another hundred and five thousand for a hundred and seventy-five thousand uh dollar contribution to Enos Jones. So that, that's kind of the unintended um consequence of, of the application before you, but uh it's gonna, it's a benefit to the whole community for the additional funding.
Okay, thank you, counsel. I do see Mr. Amadi's hand raised. I apologize, sir. We can only have one public comment per application. Uh, so we couldn't bring you up on the same application, the comment. Um, okay, Francisco, do you want to uh wrap this up?
Uh, staff has no further comment. Um, the only thing I have left is staff recommends approval with conditions outlined in the staff report that I submitted to uh Chuck.
And those would be acceptable.
Okay, thank you, counsel.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two one dash zero three five as presented to the board tonight.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval.
Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Yeah, I like the project. Look, I think that in um the trade-off here was six stories or seven, seven were parked, six was not. Um, no density standard. I think it's a, I think it's a win. Um, I like the aesthetic of the building as, as I usually do with Mr. Vandemark. Um, and um you know, I thank the public for coming out because I do think that it is so important to have the public. Uh, and I really liked some of the comments about trying to, you know, put it on record to get the developers when they're gonna build something to be sort of mindful of, of um of views and, you know, and, and all that, because that is super important. But we also, I have to remind everyone and myself, because I live in a building that does have a beautiful view, that we live in a very dynamic city that is growing and it's beautiful and it's constantly changing. And I am fully aware that my view is probably not gonna be there uh not too far from now. And um, that's kind of like, you know, the uh the trade-off of living in one of the most beautiful cities in the world. So anyway, I vote I wholeheartedly.
Commissioner Gangadin?
Yeah, I just want to thank the public for coming out this evening and uh voicing any concerns. Um, I think the variances that are being requested um are somewhat within the uh master plan, especially with the height. Um, not only that, because it's a seven-story falls within the height limits of the master plan. Um, I vote I.
Commissioner Cruz?
I vote I.
Commissioner Lipsky?
Love it. Vote I.
And Chairman Langson?
So there, there's a couple things I do have to say. Um, I appreciate the extra bike parking. Um, I know the height is within what's allowable. I cannot support something in this neighborhood with parking as an alternative. Um, I, I do understand that, you know, the height's not changing. Um, I would rather see the, uh, community ping pong room rather than, you know, a parking garage here. Uh, I think it's contrary to the master plan. And I, I think we should be encouraging walking, walkable neighborhoods here. Um, I, I hate that you know, and this is no slight to anybody that presented tonight. Um, that warning systems are always targeted at pedestrians uh for cars exiting the garage. I think those warning systems should be in place to warn the cars that there's pedestrians coming. Uh, but you know, that's just me. I, I think that falls in line with the master plan. Uh, I think we should be getting away from car culture rather than adding parking where it's not necessary. So I'm gonna vote no on this. Um, I know it's passing, but I'm gonna vote no anyway. And uh I appreciate everybody's uh comments, Mr. Vandemark. I, I think the unit sizes are great. Uh, I'm impressed with the layout. Um, I think you found some really great unit sizes in that layout. Um, but yeah, it's a no for me on the parking.
Motion carries for in favor, one opposed.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you, you too. Um counsel, while we have you up, uh, first let me uh text Santo real quick. I don't know if he's still awake.
The soccer game's over. He doesn't have to be.
Oh, that's right.
He doesn't watch soccer, Santo.
He's not a soccer fan. There he is.
Okay, uh, Mr. Harrington, while we have you up, uh, we're past our ten o'clock time here. Uh, to be honest, I didn't think we were getting this far down the agenda. I think tonight's a win for us.
Right.
We have uh one application for you and one for your colleague here.
Yeah, those are, yeah, I was covering that too. So I have the, I have the two last ones. I, I have myself to blame for not reaching them.
I wasn't gonna say it. I was thinking it, but I wasn't.
Well, I actually was gonna say it.
Okay, so uh can we carry both of those applications to a date certain right now of uh December thirteenth?
That'd be terrific.
Okay, so we're calling case B two two dash zero eight two for one sixteen on Cole Varab. Uh, that's being carried to a date certain uh December thirteenth and counsel you along grant us an extension at any time to act, I assume?
That's, yes.
Okay, we appreciate that. And uh, let's also call case P two two dash one five seven. It's a minor site plan and C variance for three twenty-four Wynton Street. That's being carried to the date certain December thirteenth and counsel, the same applies that to that uh as far as an extension for us?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate it. Um, and that rounds out our agenda. Mr. Harrington, thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, uh, so let's move on to memorialization of resolutions, please.
Mr. Chair, I think I have six, because one was added uh um just very recently by counsel. So counsel, is that correct?
That's the two fifteen Warren Street.
That's correct.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion uh to memorialize the following resolutions. Number one is resolution of the City of Jersey City Planning Board. Case number is P two two dash zero one zero. Applicant is Quoc Brothers LLC, address one twenty-six Applicant is Quoc Brothers LLC, address one twenty-six Baldwin Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey, block one two three zero nine, lot one. Second resolution is of the planning board of the City of Jersey City granting preliminary and final major site plan approval. Case number P two two dash zero three four applicant uh, is the Portofino Condominiums Association Incorporated at property commonly known as One Second Street, uh, Jersey City, New Jersey, and designated as block one one six zero three, lot thirty-four. Uh, third resolution is of the planning board of the City of Jersey City. Applicant is Hudson Exchange Phase Two LLC for preliminary and final major site plan and major subdivision approval. Uh, address is four hundred dash four twenty Marin Boulevard, Jersey City, New Jersey, block one one six zero three, lots fifty, as subdivided, and new lot fifty dot zero one and lot fifty-one as subdivided, new lot fifty-one dot zero one. Case number P two two dash zero nine seven. Resolution number four is of the pla- uh, the, the planning board of the City of Jersey City approving an extension of final major site plan approval. The applicant is three sixty Ninth Street LLC for extension of final major site plan approval. Three sixty-seven Tenth Street is the address, block number six nine zero two, lot twenty-nine. Qualifier C zero 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 three, case number P two two dash zero five one, I'm sorry. Uh, case number is P two two dash one five one. Uh, resolution number five is of the planning board of the City of Jersey City, case number P two two dash one five six for two-year extension of prior approval. Applicant is Ankit Jane and Angel Jane, address three uh, ten Fourth Street, Jersey City, New Jersey, block one one two oh seven, lot fifteen. And the fifth, I'm sorry, the sixth and final resolution is of the planning board of the City of Jer- uh, Jersey City is a minor site plan with variances submitted by two fifteen Warren LLC, addresses two fifteen Warren Street, block one four two zero two, lot twenty-two, case number P two one dash one five three.
All right, do I have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call, please, Cam?
Yes, Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Hi.
Commissioner Cruz?
Hi.
Commissioner Lipsky?
Hi.
Commissioner Gangadin?
Hi.
And Chairman Lex.
Hi.
Motion carries on in favor to memorialize resolutions.
All right, thank you. Uh, do we need an executive session, anybody?
Sure, I have like one minute of an executive session, literally.
All right, so uh, we need a motion.
We go into executive session, Mr. Chair.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Uh, Cam, can we clear the room out, please? I apologize, everybody. Thank you for coming down.
Chair, know that we have the motion in a second. Uh, did we have to take a vote on that?
No, not to go into an executive session.
Okay.
In the old days, it was a voice vote. Everyone just said aye.
Was it?
Something like that.
Commissioner Lipsky doesn't want to go into executive session.
Be uh, procedurally correct.
Two more.
Yeah. Some, sometimes they lag.
Yeah.
All right, that is it. Last one, zip it. That's funny.
All right, can we uh, pause the recording, Cam?
Oh, yeah.